I'd like to welcome every -- hello, we're starting now. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Tiverton Zoning Board of Review meeting for April 2nd. And this matters before the board on a conclusion, I hope, of this special use permit petition that's been filed by James A. Hall, Esquire, General Counsel, 695 George Washington Highway, for a special use permit for Zero Souza Road, plat 119, lot 624. The property is located in the general commercial and the pedestrian-friendly zoning districts, seeking to build a new Seasons Corner Market that will consist of a convenience store with a drive-through coffee shop and a gasoline filling station for four fueling pumps covered by a canopy, the project. The applicant is seeking a special use permit for a gasoline filling station pursuant to Article 4, Section 10J of the zoning ordinance, a special use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through service pursuant to Article 4, Section 8E of the zoning ordinance, and three, a special use permit for signage pursuant to Article 12, Section 11 of the zoning ordinance. Before we begin, I wanted to have introduced everybody that's up here. Tonight, we're going to be hearing final arguments and hopefully our deliberations. So before we get started, I wanted to let everybody know that I know this is a contentious hearing and that passions run high, but I ask you to please keep it down, keep the comments down. This has not been easy for anybody, especially the members of the board who have gone through so much paper and so much law that it's just unbelievable. And we're all struggling to do the right thing. I know we're all conscientious, we've all read the stuff that you've submitted, and I wanted to send a special shout-out to the lawyers who I think did a fabulous job. Every one of you did a great job representing your parties, and it's, you know, an emotional case, so please try to refrain from comments one way or the other so we can get through this. We all know how most of you feel, so we'll take it from there. I'd like to introduce everybody here. To my far left is George Alzaback, who's a full voting member. To my immediate left is Michael Marcello, who's our solicitor. My name is Lisi Gishite. I'm the disciplinarian of the group. Mr. Collins is to my right, he's our vice chair and a regular voting member. To his right is Jennifer Hilton.
Kavanaugh.
Kavanaugh.
That's good.
Who is also a full member. And Jay Johnson, who is -- Jackson, who is our full member as well. And our --
Susan LeBlanc.
Susan LeBlanc is our stenographer tonight. So I guess we're ready to proceed. Anything else I need to do preliminarily? Rob?
As I understand the -- well, hello. I'm Rob Stolzman, Adler Pollak and Shane representing Colby Enterprises' Seasons Corner Market. As I understand, the proceedings tonight were invited to make sort of a closing argument. I don't know if the board has any time anticipation, I can keep this extraordinarily short, and I think that would probably be appreciated, but I just want to make sure that --
Yeah, I agree. I have questions for everybody as well, so.
Okay. So first, let me thank opposing counsel. They have been gracious and cooperative, and I think we've gotten the materials together for you and kept the arguments orderly. I want to thank you as the board for having the patience to go through a dozen meetings and hearings, and the record comprises almost 3,000 pages, so -- and I know you've read it all, and we appreciate it. Appreciate the neighbors. This is -- I've been doing this a long time, and sometimes projects do become, cause celebre in a community, and passions do run high, but we appreciate everybody's civility courtesies, and it really has been generally civil. So we do appreciate that. You recited what the project is about, so I won't reiterate that. We're talking about Zero Souza Road, which is approximately 66,143 square feet, so about acre and a half site. And it was a former fuel depot. It's been many years since it was a fuel depot, but as you heard testimony, that there are remnants of contamination at the site that will be remediated. The site is in the general commercial zone with the frontage on Main Road in the pedestrian-friendly district. The site also is encumbered by the water easement along Main Road and the sewer easement on Souza, substantial easements there as we've discussed with the site plan. I think it's helpful to go back to sort of first principles and just talk about what we're asking for and why we're asking for it. So in the general commercial zone, permitted uses are included a broad category of general retail. That's permitted by right. And we've talked about differences between different categories of uses. General retail includes grocery store, in this site, an acre and a half could accommodate, let's say, Trader Joe's or an Aldi's, a smaller grocery store, what we -- in the grocery leasing business, you call a mid-size or infill. A pharmacy, maybe a CVS, or a liquor store, in addition to other uses. But general retail is the number-one category of retail uses that are permitted by right in the GC zone. Also, gasoline filling stations are identified as being permitted by special use permit, and that's why we're here, predominantly for the fuel tanks. But also, the drive-through with the food service is permitted by special use permit. And in Tiverton, you have this relatively unusual, quite unusual, your adjustments on dimensional aspects of signage are done by special use permit in Tiverton. So we're here for those three, as you said. But I thought it'd be helpful, let's just step back for a second, because you heard varying testimony about special use permits and what they are. So let me take just two minutes and talk about what is a special use permit. Special use permit is defined by state statute. A state's -- and Rhode Island General Law is 452431 expressly defines special use, and it's quote, "a regulated use that is permitted pursuant to the special use permit issued by the authorized governmental entity." So a special use is a regulated use that is permitted pursuant to the special use criteria. And this is sometimes, and there's some cases that interpret that, and they talk it about the criteria in the special use permit sections of your ordinance as being conditions preceded to the special use permit being issued. And that's led to its commonly being called, or sometimes being called, the conditionally permitted use. Now, your ordinance at Article 16, Section 2 sets forth six general criteria for special use permit, and then Section 16, 3F, an additional three for signage, one of which is not applicable here because that applies to when you're replacing a non-conforming sign, and we don't have any signs there today. So special use permit is the regulated use permitted pursuant to special use permit. Now, there's some things we've agreed with others on and the objectors counts on. Who has the burden of proof in this matter? We do. We're the applicant. We have to prove something to you. What do we have to prove to you? We have to prove that we've met the burdens of those six criteria, that we've met those conditions precedent, plus the two for the signage that are applicable. How do you measure the burden of proof? I mean, okay, we have the burden, but what is the burden? And I thought it'd be helpful just to go through the different types of burdens of proof, just so you can see how I'm approaching this and we're approaching this. So the first thing an applicant has to do is have to submit the application. And believe it or not, there is a burden of proof with the application. We have to submit a complete application and meet the burden of submitting a complete application. In litigation, that's called making a prima facie case. You have to propose the elements of the matter and the standard. In administrative law, regulatory law, it's called completing, or it's called fulfilling the regulatory requirement of bringing the matter before you. So we have that burden of proof. Now, once you're there, how do you measure it? Cases are clear, and we've cited them in our brief, I won't recite and just read that from the brief, but we've cited -- the first burden, I view it sort of as a meter, you know, a laugh meter or a sad meter. If you start here, okay, we've got the needle bouncing because we submitted the application. The next burden, level of burden, is called substantial evidence, and that's what we have here, substantial, and I'm -- substantial competent evidence. There's a little bit of a nuance of whether it's on an appeal or back at this level, but let's assume you have to have substantial evidence that is reliable, and you can rely upon it. We'll concede that. Not concede it, but we -- it's not clear to us that it's applicable here, but we've met that burden anyway. So you've got the meter bouncing, it goes up to substantial. Now, what is substantial? That is very clearly defined by the cases Lloyd, RBSE, Licio, there's a whole bunch of cases that say it's substantial evidence is more than a scintilla but less than a preponderance. So that, and now scintilla, Oxford English Dictionary, is a trace. So it's more than a trace but less than a preponderance. Now, preponderance, we all learned from Tom Brady and the inflated footballs and his arbitration, because that was a preponderance. Preponderance is more likely than not, or 51 percent. So most of the disputes that go to court are a preponderance or just arbitration, is you've got two experts, which one do we like, which one makes sense to us, which one meets the burden, 51 percent. So more than a scintilla is here, preponderance is in the middle, 51, 49, you win. Then you go to, the next level is clear and convincing. Now, the meter's all the way over here. 75 percent is often used as, you know, it's more likely, highly more likely than not, it's clear and convincing. That's, and the last, of course, is beyond a reasonable doubt for criminal matters, that you can't have a reasonable doubt. So we're all the way over here. Now, that doesn't mean there's no burden. That doesn't mean you just have to approve it. And using my meter or using a scale, it's my obligation to put substantial weight in the scale. The scale doesn't have to be even, it doesn't have to tip over beyond 50 percent, but I've got to put substantial weight in the scale. There's another test, in addition to that, for special use permits, and we cite the cases on this, because it's not only meeting the burden, but in some of the criteria, you're measuring impact. What's the impact of the project? Does the project cause a nuisance in the neighborhood? The cases are clear, and we cite those extensively in our brief, RBSE, Center Realty, the law directs you not to compare our project to the status quo, an empty lot, but to compare it to other permitted uses. And that's important here, because it's retail, something will be built there. And if I may quote this case, this is important, Rhode Island Supreme Court, 2006, and RBSE, "A special use permit cannot be denied on the ground that a certain condition could equally occur with a permitted use." So that, so I've got to put weight in the scale, substantial weight in the scale, and you're to compare it to other permitted uses. Now, I'll take a second to just briefly go through the six criteria and the general, and then the two signs, and why we think we've put the weight in the scale. And you may ask, well, Mr. Stolzman, how could we, you know, if you put an expert testimony, how would you not do it? How would you, how would we not approve it? Well, if, either through public testimony, or through your own experience, or through the experts provided by objectors, if you felt that the evidence that we presented did not put weight in the scale, was either irrelevant or not credible, that it defied all credibility and you apply no credibility to it, you don't have to approve us. If you find it's substantially more than a scintilla, less than a preponderance, provide that weight, then you do. And you can do it because it's a regulated activity with whatever conditions you think are reasonable to meet that weight in the scale criteria. The first one is, will the public convenience and welfare be served? And I'm not going to, you know, I know you don't want to hear a back and forth, but in this instance, I want to make it clear, the ordinance doesn't say the detriments to the public will outweigh, you know, or that your convenience outweighs the detriments. We just have to show you that there is a public convenience. And our experts did that in multiple areas. They showed you that there's opportunity for retail sales, retail gasoline sales, gasoline providing, grocery store, and also, I'm sorry, the convenience store, and tax revenue. So there's a public benefit to it. It doesn't have, now, others may argue, and people have argued, but the negatives outweigh that. That's not the criteria. Did we provide some public convenience and welfare? Two, the proposed use will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, the public harm. Eric Simpson, you recall, spent a lot of time talking about each of the components. We went through the gasoline providing, the tanks, the transmission lines, the pumps. We went through the lighting, he went, the noise meters, there's testimony on, we tried to think, what possible public safety, community harm, not from the use, but from the actual activity on the site, could occur? In addition to that, we also did the light studies to show that the, now, you can see it, but the light won't emanate onto and create a light impact off-site. Three, the proposed special use will be compatible with the neighboring uses. And we can talk whether neighboring or neighborhood, the semantics of that, frankly, we don't think makes a big difference. The fact of the matter is, is that there are a lot of mixed uses in the very close proximity. To the south of us, we've got the assisted living facility right across the street. To the north of us, we've got the mixed-use retail. Yes, our immediate abudders are residential, and down the hill, of course, is residential. You've got a very varied mixed-use neighborhood here. Mr. Hool testified at length about neighborhood uses, other gas stations in neighborhoods, the historic nature of corner stores. With corner stores came gas pumps, there was extensive testimony with respect to that. Four, not creating nuisance in the neighborhood nor hinder endanger vehicular traffic. Frankly, I thought this was going to be the heart of the whole case a year and a half We provided two traffic studies, two days of testimony, two hearings almost exclusively on traffic. And what did Mr. Chevlin conclude, and what did par engineering conclude, and crossman engineering saying that methodology was consistent with the methodology to be used? Was that this intersection is a lousy intersection. It's a lousy intersection today. It will be a lousy intersection tomorrow. It will be a lousy intersection with a Seasons Corner Market, and it will be a lousy intersection with another permitted use. The truth of the matter is, is we met our burden here because what we've demonstrated is that when, and Mr. Chevlin did a separate report, and we submitted that and discussed it at length, that compared to the grocery store, a liquor store, the levels of service are not diminished, the safety is not diminished. That intersection is not good. It's not unsafe, it's not going to be any more unsafe or any less serviceable in terms of turning times than if we were to build a permitted use at the site. Now, Mr. Meth came up and testified adverse to that. And frankly, I haven't talked about other opposing testimony, I'm going to spend a minute on Mr. Meth's testimony, because he gave no analysis as to the counts that we used other than he challenged Chevlin on how he came to his conclusions. And we quoted this in our brief, it's quoted in the record. He said, he came to different conclusions based on his professional judgment. That's not enough. He seemed like a very nice guy, very capable, but that's just simply not enough to say you can't give any credibility to John Chevlin. They just didn't do the work. And when he did cite other studies, he cited the Carpynato Project from 10 years ago with 400,000 square feet of mixed use. Irrelevant. And also, I was not impressed with, and I don't think you should be impressed with, the depth of Mr. Meth's analysis of this particular intersection, because he spent half the time talking about the crosswalk, not even knowing that we haven't even gone to the state yet for approval of the crosswalk. The reason I spent a little bit of negative energy on this is because I think that is, this is the heart of this case, is the traffic. And the fact of the matter is, is we believe we've provided substantial competent testimony that this traffic situation will not be hindered any more than it would be with any of the other permitted uses. Six, compatible with the comprehensive plan. This also generated a ton of atmospherics. The truth is, comprehensive plans are long documents with a lot of elements or components, and nobody is, no building in the town is consistent with every component of the comprehensive plan. The key is where, for this particular matter, for your special use permit for zoning, what does the town say should happen from Souza Road North on Main Road? The future land use map is as precise as any component of your comprehensive plan. The commercial corridor is from Souza Road North. We are north of Souza Road. The pedestrian-friendly district goes to Souza Road and north, that's where we're in. We built outside of that on purpose to make sure that we're in compliance with your ordinance and with your comprehensive plan. Again, you're not obligated to approve this just because we comply with the commercial use that's designated in the comp plan, but you are obligated to look at the components and say, have they provided substantial common testimony that there's weight in the scale? And if we believe that that's credible, then we should approve this. Now, there was a fair amount of testimony from Mr. Friedrichs on this as well, and he came to the conclusion it doesn't comply with the comprehensive plan, and it disturbs the historic district. I want to spend just a second on that. First of all, we're not in the historic district. Two, the only place you can see the project from the historic district is from the property on the west side on the sidewalk, and the only aspect of the project, our project that you see, was the photograph of, and it puts where the sign would be. So we don't think it's credible to say that we can't give any credibility to the experts we had because Mr. Friedrich's testimony so outweighs that to relieve us of having, or to diminish the quality of us having met that burden. With respect to the signage, we really don't, remember, we provided a chart and it has the waivers. We're not asking for a lot of signage here. The big signage, in terms of square footage and height, is the monument sign. And the reason is because of the setback and the wide right-of-way on Main Road, we think the sign should be a little bit closer to the road so it's visible for safety purposes. And then we thought it should have a stone base so both, A, looks better and is a little bit higher. So we're asking for that little bit of height, I forget the exact dimensions, I apologize, I should know that, but it's not, we're not asking for a pylon, just a little bit of height and that location. We've taken out the internally illuminated signs, we've asked for two, are still remnants in the application, the pectins, the little shell symbols themselves, but we've taken out the illuminated signs, internally illuminated signs, and then we have a smattering of other locations and square footages, all of which can be regulated, eliminated, I mean, it's just a matter of us trying to comply with the brand. The lighting and the signage, the first criteria is that it's detrimental to the business if we don't meet that. What we've told you, and we presented to you, in the plan, the Shell franchise requirements, Mr. Alzaback did a great job of schooling me, go back and look at that, and I did, and he was right, they can be waived. When we say that, and as counsel, I represent you as an agent, a disclosed agent of the client, I'm authorized to say this, I commit on the record that I'm saying this on behalf of the client. If you put a condition on with respect to signage, and we can't get approval from Shell, we don't meet your permit, we can't build. It's that simple. So, I'm sorry, and the second criteria is that it's necessary to achieve its effect. The only aspect of this that is monumental, is important, is the monument sign. And then the other signs are really just to identify the different components of the buildings. There's nothing there to attract people off the road or anything like that. So we think that what we've asked for is necessary to attract that. We had Mr. Simpson and Depreed Engineering testify as to how the site would, site would work. So getting back to our first principles, special use permit is a regulated use permitted if we meet the criteria. To meet the criteria, we have to put weight in the scale and beyond the point where you find it incredible or irrelevant, and you have to compare it, the case line, the case you should compare that to the other permitted uses. And we think we've met that burden. We know it's unpopular, we know it's unpopular, and that's too bad. But we don't, you know, we don't, we don't have any other way to make the project smaller and otherwise comply with your ordinance. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, legal or factual. We do have 3,000, almost 3,000 pages of record, so I might not have it all at my fingertips, but we brought, we brought everything with us, and between that and the computer, I'm sure we can answer any questions you have.
I have one, two questions. So if for some reason we deny you all the special permits we gave you, you will go away, you will not build the store?
That's not appropriate. It is appropriate.
No, no, if you, if we're denied the special use, if you're, if we're denied the special use permits for the special uses, we won't be, we won't be lawfully permitted to implement the special uses.
No, no. What I'm saying is, there's a Cumberland Farm down the street who built just a store without a gas station. There's 7-Eleven without gas stations. There's shelves without gas. You will not be willing to build a shelf without gas. I'm asking, will you build standalone store?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, that's all. It's appropriate question, answer. Just by, let's see it.
I had a couple of questions.
Yes, go ahead.
I had two questions, actually, but one of them you've already answered, and that was about the crosswalk and the State Traffic Commission. The other one, I noticed that there is a state requirement for DOT, Rhode Island Department of Transportation, that requires them to submit your PAP application to the Rhode Island Historical Preservation and Heritage Commission for their review and comment, and that it all, there has to be an approval of, by them before you can get your, your application approval. And I know you've gotten your application approval, so I'm assuming that that review has occurred, and I'm just wondering if you were involved in that, if you have any idea if they had any concerns or questions that were addressed in?
I don't know the answer to that question. The, excuse me, apologize. The engineering company, Depreed Engineering, processed the physical alteration permit, and we did advise on certain aspects of if a legal question came up or commentary on other land use applications. I am not familiar with and don't know the answer to the historical, State Historic and Preservation Commission, HPHC, interaction here. Had you not asked the question in that way, I would have said, oh, I think that's, if it's in a historic district, but I, but if you say that it applies to all physical alteration permits, I just don't recall that being necessary.
Well, it has to be a review by, by the society, so, or the commission, so I'm assuming it happened.
Yeah, so what Yeah, so what normally would happen in those cases, and we're speculating a little bit, but I suspect it was sent to them and they either received an approval or no comment. But we could find that out, I'm happy to find that out.
I have one more question. I said I had to, I'm sorry.
I think you've answered the question, thank you.
But it has, it has been approved, so.
That's right. So, we can assume that the review is done, we just don't know if they had any concerns.
But if they did, it was approved at this point.
Right.
Jay, do you have any questions?
I said I had two questions, I only asked one.
I just wanted to give everybody a turn.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, you went totally negative for a little bit, and I wrote a couple things. You said it's a lousy intersection, lousy this, lousy this, it's always going to be lousy no matter what you put there. I disagree 100% by the way, because you could put a store there, will not have the same traffic that are, not just season gas station, any gas station. I own a gas station, creates a different totally kind of traffic. When you put four pumps and trucks and people going in and out, with all due respect to your traffic guy, I owned a gas station for 40 years, so I disagree with that statement. Taking that into consideration, the first night you stood right there, you pointed a guest at a store, a very big company in the state, in the state, in the country, have a store in this town, and you compared your hours to theirs, and you cut your hours comparing to theirs. So, my point to you, that lousy intersection with the lousy traffic with lousy all that, if you stick that same company in that corner, will not have the same effect of the traffic and the lousy intersection and the lousy corner with the same study. So, I disagree with your negative tone in that you could stick a store there, with any kind of store, it will not have the same effect.
Yeah, I understand your statement, and I understand your disagreement. Respectfully, that's not the standard. It's not, it's not, it's not, it's not for, it's not our burden to put a less impactful retail facility on that store when compared to other permitted uses. So, for example, we could put in, somebody in the public comment had talked about a bookstore or an antique store. That's not the burden we have. Or a convenience store with different amenities, that's not the burden we have. So, I understand your comment.
No, I'm saying I could compare you, you said, don't compare me to an empty lot. I'm saying I could compare you to another store in town that exists.
I understand, I, I.
I'm comparing to a.
I understand, that's not our burden, though.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. And the first one is, the people that testified about, oh, the comp plan and harmonious with the neighborhood, and I, I mean, the way that both counsel treated the issue was very interesting and very different to me. Is there any Supreme Court cases that say whether, when you're, you know, if you're consistent with the neighborhood, does that talk about consistent with the general commercial properties that are in, in which it is a district it's in? Or does it mean the residential neighborhood that's in the general buyers of the project? Because I couldn't find anything in there.
It may have been Licio and that string of cases that talks about with the, in the context of the comp plan, looking at, looking at the general surrounding areas, not the immediate abutters. And, and we cited that in our brief, and I don't remember if it was the Supreme Court or other Superior Court cases, but that, I think it's the Licio or the RSB, RBSE string of cases. And, and the point is, we recognize, and we acknowledge, you can listen to lay testimony on the neighborhood, absolutely, and that, but, but the, or the neighboring properties. But it's not just the abutters, and you have to make a determination of what you think is consistent with the zone and the comprehensive plan. And we, we think you have an obligation to consider, within the same distances as residential owners and within the abutting properties or in the radius, et cetera, we've got commercial uses already. So, that's why we said this is really a mixed-use neighborhood. The abutters are all residential, and then there's down the hill, of course, with the, with the condominium, there's extensively dense residential, we acknowledge that.
Thank you. The other one I had, I still have a question about the signs. As I recall, the internally lit signs were going to be the Shell and the menu boards.
The menu boards are LED.
Okay.
And the only remaining internally lit sign, which, if you were to approve this, without these, we would have to get a waiver for it, it would be our obligation, are, there are two, they're called pectins, I guess, the root of pesche, the fish, the Shell signs are internally lit, and.
All right, you said that you got rid of the internally lit stuff.
Except for those two Shell pectins.
All right.
On the canopy, right?
On the canopy, yeah.
And what about all the other lines on the canopy? Are they, are they considered part of?
No, so they're not signs.
They're like.
There's halo lighting on the canopy, which I knew was of great concern, and, and if those were prohibited, we would, we would have to live with that. We'd have to seek permission, because the standard calls for the halo-lit canopy. That's why we didn't just take it out, because I have to now, if you approve this without those, I have to go back and get permission to remove them as a municipally required restriction, and, and that, which we'll do.
Is the Shell sign going to be on all night long?
No.
Everything's going to be off?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and we would, we would live with lighting restrictions and conditions in those regards, we'd have to.
And if we, can I add on top of her question? I had asked also for the pricing on top of the pump to be not lit.
Yes, yes, that's in that category as well.
That's gone?
We took the toppers off because they were redundant and not required by law, and then the lit, the lighting component, we also, we would have to turn those off at the hours required by you.
Okay, thank you. I had another question. I know you indicated that the gas wouldn't be delivered outside of business hours. I have a question about when does the dumpster get emptied? And would that be confined to your working hours as well?
Yes, yes, then, and we have heard conflicting testimony on that, but we, we believe that we can, and can control the hours of delivery and would have to be in conformance with your, your requirements on those.
I'm sorry, I'm going to follow. There's, I apologize, that is absolutely, we both know, I don't know, you could put somebody from your company, that is absolutely false.
Well.
There's absolutely, I'm sorry, that is absolutely false. There is absolutely no way you're going to stand, you could bring somebody from Covey up here to testify, enter oath for that. Absolutely, that's false.
It's a little late for that.
No, that is absolutely false. I'm not going to stand over here and accept that testimony. That's false.
You didn't testify.
Yeah, no, that's, I'm sorry, I'm not thinking that. I'm not. You can pick right there as much as you want. That's not a true statement by anybody.
Anyone else?
Unless you will pay a fine for that.
Well, fines and enforcement, yeah, we understand that.
Not at the same time, please.
Yeah, the answer is yes, though. I mean, the answer is yes, and you have enforcement mechanisms, you can also rescind approvals.
One at a time, please.
Yeah.
I don't even know what you're talking about, because you've been talking over each other.
It was, the question was with respect to deliveries that you had initiated, Madam Chair, and, and we, you recall, we moved the dumpster away from the street, we've, we've also, the dumpster itself absolutely can be, the hours can be controlled, we do recognize we have neighbors abutting us, we've talked about landscape buffering that, the fuel deliveries are also, and, and we'd also, we also talked about store deliveries, right? And this, we're not a major grocery store with large tractor-trailers dropping off groceries. The truth, the fact of the matter is, is that this, and again, remember, this facility, when you compare it to other retail facilities that are permitted, will not generate more delivery traffic or more delivery danger than, than the other permitted uses. It just won't. That's our, that's our belief.
That's your story, you're sticking to it.
That's our story, we're sticking to it. The Roy Perkins song, I think. Jimmy Buffett with a great cover.
I'm just trying to get.
I'm going to hear from the other side.
What?
I'm going to hear from the other side, too, right?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, no. You're saying to me that.
I said, you're going to hear from the other side, too. I want to make sure that you have an opportunity to have the other side, that's all. Trying to be fair.
Oh, absolutely. We're just going to hear.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I get it. Excuse me, just, I just want, sometimes I will whisper to the chair to give her legal advice, that's not for public consumption. So, I might say, you know, we're off the track or something like that, you're not going to hear everything that I give, I'm not, I don't make the decision, I just give her legal advice. So, there might be times that I whisper into her ear about something. Don't take that the wrong way, it's my job to give her legal advice, and to give this board legal advice to make sure that we're not off the track, that's all.
Are you saying that a convenience store alone isn't going to have, is going to have as much activity as a convenience store with a gas station and a restaurant?
No, no, what I'm saying is that the 3,600-square-foot convenience store with four dispensaries, and Mr. Chevlin, we did, showed, was equivalent to a 5,000-square-foot
Right.
of the other permitted uses. So, a smaller convenience store with the, with the four dispensaries is not more impactful than a larger retail facility.
Okay. Anybody else? I think I have, those are all my questions. Did you count the welcome sign as part of the?
I don't recall the exact calculations, but I'm confident we could accommodate.
Yeah, because I mean, you know, if you're talking about what's reasonably necessary to convey what's going on, the welcome sign, like, it could be the first to go.
We tried to reduce the signage to something that would be minimally helpful, but we obviously, and consistent with the program that we use, which is the pre-approved Shell program, whatever, we can accommodate conditions on signage and lighting to meet the town's requirements.
Thank you. You ready?
Thank you, members of the board. As you can tell, I'm going to keep it brief tonight. Karen Benson, on behalf of Preserve Tiverton Law Office at One Courthouse Square in Newport. I recognize how hard this board has worked. I empathize because I was there in your seat many years ago, early in my career, and I know the work that goes at home, not just for these many hearings, so I am going to be very brief. I'm not going to rehash. I have three points. One is an anecdote, one is about the signs, and the other one is about the standards that I think we should follow tonight to comply with the ordinance and the state statute. First, the anecdote. On Monday, March 3rd, I was frantically putting together my final brief, original submission for this matter. I was in the office early, 8:00 in the morning in Fall River, and I hear, right outside my window, that was a thump. Now, I've been there for 18 years, I kind of knew what it was, but I was wrong. I thought it was a car accident. It wasn't. It was an automobile versus pedestrian in the crosswalk right outside of my office. And the lady was in a motorized wheelchair with an oxygen canister on the top. Now, I won't belabor what I observed, but imagine if that happened at this location. What I saw was fire and rescue, police officers, cars backed up for both blocks, and this is an urban setting with clear sightlines and four crosswalks, one on South Main Street and one on each side of Spring Street. In fact, there are two crosswalks only about 30 feet from each other. So, I ask you, is there really any way that you can imagine how a similar situation would look on this intersection? Think about that. I do believe the woman was okay, and I'm not trying to be overly dramatic, but elderly and in a wheelchair and in a low, a low-impact setting. My second argument, this notion that something is going to go in there, that is not a good tree to go up. Your responsibility is to look at the evidence and the facts that were presented in this case. And yes, as my brother says, he has the burden of proof, but we hope you look at the case law and the evidence that we presented. Not a theoretical or hypothetical development, this development, because the special use permit standard requires that all of the requirements be met. If one requirement is not satisfied, say the safety of the pedestrians or drivers, then you no longer have the authority to allow this. The board does not have discretion whether to grant the relief, it is rendered without power to do so. Both your ordinance for the town of Tiverton and the state-enabling legislation say this clearly. And again, we've covered this in our memo. The proposed findings of fact, we always do this, it's helpful to counsel, it's helpful to you as a board, and my brothers have prepared proposed findings of fact, but we take issue with some of the things that are in there. And I'm going to just highlight a couple of them, because I asked you to take a look at them. I'll give you a few examples. On page two, they suggest that they would get waivers from Shell, we just talked about it. Page two, paragraph two, there's no evidence in this record that they can do that. And if you allow it, I predict they will be back and they'll be asking for further relief. They'll do the best they can with the waivers, and then they're going to come back before you and say, here's what we were able to do. But they're not going to comply with the ordinance, because you don't have any evidence that they can. You're still asking questions tonight about exactly what the status of the signage is, and that's why, because it isn't clear, and it isn't in the record. And that's what you need to base your decision on. Counsel is still an unsworn witness, and he may make a representation, but he doesn't know. Mr., you may know, but this applicant doesn't know. They mischaracterize some of the evidence. They want to gloss over some of the traffic evidence, and frankly, I don't blame them. By way of illustration, they say on page three, about Mr. Chevlin, he didn't take those traffic counts, he testified under oath that others assembled the data and he interpreted it. He wasn't out in the field, just like Mr. Meth wasn't out in the field. So, I ask you to look at that evidence again. I know you have, and weigh that evidence for credibility, especially when it comes to some of the issues that were never addressed by the applicant. On page four, again, this is the proposed findings of fact, they mischaracterize what Mr. Meth reviews for his materials. We provided you with page references to the record so that you can see what Mr. Meth reviewed to come to his conclusions. Colby asserts that he didn't present any evidence, but he did. He did. He presented evidence from those ITE manuals, and both witnesses used the same manuals. And both sides agreed that that manual is the backbone of how we draw conclusions about whether or not we, you, can make this development safe with conditions. We submitted evidence as formulas for calculating trip generation. And we presented that evidence through Mr. Meth in advance of his testimony. The applicant could have crossed, could have done cross-examination on that, there were four schedules, and they elected not to. We presented evidence, and this is important, and the applicant had no information regarding Saturday traffic counts. That's why we referred to that old data, because it gives us historical information. And that evidence undisputably was that Saturday counts were higher. And guess what happened this past Saturday? There was, at this intersection, there was an accident, a serious three-car accident, right at that intersection. In closing, I'll submit to you that there is no set of conditions that this board could hope to impose, and that this applicant could actually enforce, that's important, too, to prevent dangerous traffic impacts, pedestrian crossings, kids riding school buses, and the very situation that I observed out my window in Fall River a couple of weeks ago. Preserve Tiverton asks that you deny all three of the special use permit applications. Preserve Tiverton asks that you deny all three of the special use permit applications.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions for you, too.
I don't know if I'm up for fielding questions.
If you're not at work.
I mean, I'm staying, but I'll take my colleagues. Let him shine.
You can sit down if you want. I don't mean to interrupt your... No, I just... I don't... I'll wait until you finish your presentation.
Well, yeah, mine and I can field the questions of... Because we did, as you know, we did a joint brief, and we collaborated on the arguments together. And I don't want to... Just want to take off what Karen said about the Saturday traffic.
Can you just identify yourself?
Oh, yeah, sure. I apologize for that, Ms. Blank. My name is Christopher DeVideo. I represent Ms. Tracy Haywood, who's... Lives in within 200 feet of this project on Souza Road. Just taking off on the Saturday traffic, there's been a mention, both in the brief and here tonight. Sure, that traffic study looking at Saturday traffic pertained to a 4,000 or 40,000, I forget the exact words used, project. But it wasn't what is going to be the traffic resulting from 400,000-square-foot carty project. It's like, what is the traffic then? That's the data that Mr. Meth used, well, first said they didn't have, didn't consider, and he used that data to make his opinion as to what the traffic conditions would be like. I think it's... And I'm just doing that in order. But I think, is it Ms. Kavanaugh? Yeah. So I think it is speculative as to know when... Whether or not the... The... Excuse me, the Rhode Island Historic Preservation Historic Commission did review this project. It was your question followed up by your sort of affirmation. So let me just help you understand that not all PAPs are reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission. So to assume that the PAP was issued and therefore the commission had to look at it is not correct, and I can tell you...
They had to accept it according to the requirements.
No, that's not... Let me tell you what the requirements are.
I have it right here.
Okay, so tell me... Well, I can tell you right now that it has to... First of all, it has to involve federal funds, which this project doesn't. It has to be...
Where are you looking now? Because I didn't see that when I read the requirement.
Well, I'm looking at...
Is that... Is it L of 4.5, the state requirements?
I'm looking at... Hold on one second. Let me just find out the actual... It's under 42... 45-5.
Rhode Island General Laws?
Yes, Rhode Island General Law. Okay? So...
Okay, I'm looking at 290 RICR-20-004.5L.
Okay.
Would you like me to read it?
Sure. But let me just write it down, and I'll look it up. 290... You're looking at the actual regulation itself, not the statute.
Correct. 290...
Yep. F?
L.
L as in Lima?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's... All it says, word for word, is coordination with the Rhode Island Historic Preservation and Historic Heritage Commission, the RI-PHC, the department referring to the dot, will submit a copy of the application to the RI-PHC for comments. The applicant will be responsible for addressing any comments to the RI-HPHC. And permission, meaning granting of the PAP application, will not be granted until the RI-HPHC comments are resolved, period.
Well, right. And so what I'm suggesting to you is that that isn't the... By statute, the requirement that they do it consistently and always. So if you are nowhere near Historic Commission, Historic District, why would DOT submit that for comment to the Historic Commission?
Well, I... It's my understanding that they're pretty close.
Well, so that's a different analysis. So when you are in the district, then you must. We're not in the district.
So are you saying that the state is not interested in the impact of this project on...
They might have been had they been apprised of it, but you're assuming that this PAP...
Well, that's why they asked if...
Right, he doesn't know, and I can...
...somehow had any knowledge of what went on.
Right. And let's look at this intuitively. If the applicant, through their engineers, when submitting that PAP, submitted that information to the Historic Commission, and the Historic Commission came back and said, no impact, don't you think we would have had that as evidence in this record? Don't you think that they would have produced that? In fact, today, he's like, I don't know. It's speculation. I don't know if it happened. And that's why I'm trying to say to you, it's not automatic that a PAP is submitted to the Historic Commission. When it's in the district, yes, but that's not the analysis here. That's not the analysis here, because the analysis is from Peter Friedrich, what impact this project might have on the district, being that it's so close that it could degrade the quality of that district. And it also looked at its compatibility with the surrounding neighboring use, not neighborhood, because, of course, we know that Hool didn't look at the neighborhood. He looked up the road at the car, and he didn't look at Souza Road even. Didn't even opine about Souza Road. That's the neighborhood. So we have... And by the way, Hool, who opined about Historic District impacts, shouldn't... His evidence should be discarded, as we argued. He has no Historic District or Commission experience, not by credentials or anything, whereas Peter Friedrich does. And so when he put in substantial evidence into the record based on his expertise, that is substantial evidence that should be considered by this board, not the testimony of a real estate person who does not have those credentials, no experience, no certifications, nothing. So I just wanted to address that issue because it came up in the beginning about the Historic District. But in any case, you want to...
I just want to tag team. Christopher's correct. 290 RICR-20-004.5 applies to municipal infrastructure projects for which you're seeking a loan. It doesn't apply to private, so we cannot assume that it has been approved by anyone. And I'll be happy with my brother's... I'm sure he already knows this, with my brother's permission to submit the regulations, or I can read from it. But it is clearly a municipal requirement, not an individual project. Department of Transportation, Government and Utilities, submission and evaluation of municipal infrastructure plans under Municipal Road and Bridge Revolving Loan Fund. That's what you said. You're applying for a loan. It's not a consideration here. You cannot assume it is not in evidence.
Well, I just... I mean, did you submit that question to your solicitor to see if it was applicable?
He can't... He's not going to answer that question.
Oh, okay. Well, George...
You're fine privilege, you know that.
Okay, sure. He doesn't have to answer it. You don't have to answer it either, but I'm just curious. I mean, if I was going to assert some sort of legal position, I'd kind of look to see if it was... Had some foundation to it. So we don't have to go through this exercise as we did. But I think that's all that I have in terms of just following up my... Ms. Benson's comments. And I know they said RBS cannot be denied based on the impact from equally used by right. So, yes, okay, if you were going to put in something that... A convenience store, but we know that we're going to have something different than a convenience store here, whether it be by numbers of trips. But people go into a grocery store, they stay for a while. When you go into a convenience store, you're in and out. You go into a gas station, you're in and out. You go into a Dunkin' Donuts or whatever it might be, you're in and out. There's two different things that is going to be going on here. So to compare this three use to a used by right is an illusion. And in fact, Mr. Chevlin opined on that. And I think that's about it, of, you know, this fines and enforcement. The neighbors should have to be subjected to deliveries, off-hours, gas, whatever it be, for the Dunkin' Donuts, for the convenience store, for the dumpster, and then they got to call and complain. Zoning offices got to go down there and give a fine or enforcement. That's no way... That's no way for these people to live. And so I think intuitively, we all know, if you ever see the way these... Any operation happens, the dumpsters come when they can. In fact, why would a dumpster want to come when they're operating or deliver gas when they're operating? They want to come when no one's there. Or early in the morning, which is even worse for people who are trying to sleep. So fines and enforcement, I don't think that that's... That should be even considered as part of a condition. Then, of course, we talk about the conformity to the comp plan. It's true. I know that any project is going to hit every single button in a comprehensive plan, but you have to weigh the evidence that's presented to you. Where it does meet it, right, it's going to generate tax dollars, according to Mr. Pimental. It's going to provide a needed service. But what about all those other areas of the comprehensive plan where it doesn't conform that Mr. Friedrich pointed out? That's how you weigh whether or not their substantial evidence is sufficient to make a finding that there's not going to be a nuisance or impact to the character of the neighborhood. And lastly, I know that it came up, and hopefully you read this, and hopefully... I don't know where you fall on this from a legal position, but there was a dispute as to whether or not impact on property values should be a factor when considering the criteria on the general public's welfare. We had that discussion. I cited a case that we had the opportunity to really provide all the case law. I could almost have done a law review on the number of cases in Rhode Island where zoning boards, and Supreme Court have upheld it, where impacts, diminution to property value was a valid factor when a zoning board was considering whether or not something was in the public's welfare. Now, we had... And in fact, I think the applicant concedes that it's something that's important. Our expert, who's a real estate broker, provided really compelling evidence. Okay? No, our... Our expert.
They did not concede.
Well, in his... In his brief, he suggests that property value could be a factor. Oh, okay.
When we pushed him, he did not say that. He said, we can't... I can't confirm that because it's comparing apples and oranges.
Okay.
He did not. He said, I lived in Newport.
He said, I lived in Newport next to a gas station, and I argue with him that point. He did not concede.
No, no, no. I meant to say in the applicant's brief...
Oh, brief, okay.
In their brief, they kind of come around to that property value is something is important. And then they begin to argue why there's not going to be a problem with property value. That's my point that I was trying to make. The applicant, through his brief, recognizes that property value is a legitimate factor. And I'm saying to you, when you look at that as a factor, as they're conceding, and we've presented sufficient legal argument to support that, that our real estate expert, okay, talks about, hey, if you were going to list this property, is this something that's going to have an effect on the value? And he clearly said, yes. They didn't have anybody saying anything credible about it. In fact, Mr. Hool dodged the question. He said, I didn't consider it because my attorney told me it wasn't a factor, something to that effect.
I have a question.
Yes.
And that is, you know, I read all the cases.
Yeah.
And it seems to me that the court, like in the early cases in the '60s, '50s, '60s, maybe early '70s, they were more prone to consider the effect of real estate values on a given project. But it seemed that the later cases qualify that by saying, oh, in East Greenwich, it was written into that town's special use criteria, that economic harm. And they said, that's, you know, that's by, you know, if your municipality wanted to put that as a criteria, they, you know, they knew how to do it. I think Johnston did it. I think East Greenwich did it, where the town council said, this diminution of property is an issue only if it was specifically articulated in the criteria for special use permits.
Well, I hear what you're saying is that in some cases, some instances, municipalities may have that as a specific criteria, okay? Some, but not all, okay? It's your job as the zoning board, okay? What is the public's welfare? That's your decision. Now, what I'm saying to you is...
Yes or no? Because public welfare and, you know, it doesn't mean what it's... What you would think it meant, like, these people, you know, what's in their best, you know, what's in their best interest and what's in their welfare? But it's like convenience, you know? It's convenient for the general public.
Well...
I mean, and all the case law, I mean, the earlier cases, not only on real estate values, but safety, you know, that was clear that, you know, if the car door was going to open on the sidewalk, you know, in the area where the gas station was located, you know, the special use was properly denied. If it's a funeral home and they're worried about safety of the children in the neighborhood, that was upheld. But those were old cases, and it seems like the newer cases...
But just to confuse... I don't think I brought up a case or referenced a case about doors opening.
Well, I read it in the...
But maybe I did.
The case, I don't remember the name of it, was submitted by somebody.
Okay.
But, I mean, that's... It shows the evolution of what safety is, and that's a fluctuating concept with our courts.
Right, safety. I'm talking about...
No, I know what you're talking about. I'm going, the whole thing is so nebulous because it's what's publicly convenient, what's, you know, what's in the best interests of everybody. And safety used to be really big. And, you know, that safety is still my primary concern, you know, with this application. And, you know, all of a sudden, you know, if it's dangerous before and it's going to be dangerous if we grant it, then it's like no harm, no foul. Like, we're not justified in denying the special use permit. I mean, the case law has really, really grown.
However, if it creates a hazardous condition...
No, yeah.
That's different.
But I'm looking at the Perone case, okay?
Right.
And that one says, okay, we don't know from the record below if the council members, the zoning members, thought it was dangerous. And if it was based on that, it's a lay opinion, it's not probative, and it's not relevant. But if it's because the road is in tough shape, then we can condition it on the road getting fixed. And that's right in the text of the opinion. And I'm thinking, do we have the authority to order, you know, traffic lighting there? Do we have the ability to say, they got to paint the lines better on the road so you can see, you know, things? Who's going to clean the overgrowth on Souza Road so you have... They can even measure a sightline down to Main Road? Like, what... You know, that line standing there that we can say, your petition is going to be granted upon the changing of the road, I say, wow, how is Rob Stolzmann going to, like, put a traffic light up in the middle of the intersection? How is Rob Stolzmann and his client going to put a turn lane there when the Supreme Court case Judge Joslin seemed to suggest we have the power to do that?
Well, look at... I can tell you that I live near a Seasons in Colbya on the intersection of 113 and Route 5 in Warwick, and that entire intersection by Copia Nato was rebuilt with its own lane for people to come off the highway to get into Crown Plaza with islands, expanded it. So...
Can I follow up and ask you a question? So you... And I ask just Mike. So you're saying that we should not consider the fact that building, even this gas station that affects the neighborhood, like, the character and the value of all these properties, like, building this gas station or any other project could be not a gas station, could be anything else but that? We should not take in the fact that this... All these homes could be just value brought down? I mean, my own gas station where I'm at, if somebody today puts my own gas station where it's at, I own all these houses could be destroyed. My own values, my houses are on my own station.
My point is that the Supreme Court has tempered what it said 40 or 50 years ago with new definitions. We're obligated to follow the law.
Forty, 50 years ago?
No, the recent stuff. The recent stuff keeps saying if they've got a right... If they've got a right to do it, you know, and if a similar use were to be built there that would have the same problems, we can't say no.
Okay.
I don't want... You know, this is not my... We didn't write the law. We didn't write the ordinance.
I just want to have for the record that there's no Supreme Court case, recent or otherwise, that poo-poo's or downpews... otherwise, that poo-poo's or downplays or says you cannot consider property value diminution. There's none. The fact that some towns, maybe because of ambiguity, put it in specifically, that's, that's their decision. We, but, but there are decisions by the Supreme Court, Superior Court, recent and old, that still, that case law is still good, has not been overturned. The zoning board of review, one of your principal jobs is in interpreting your zoning ordinance. That's your job. And you have to, at some point, come to a conclusion, I think Mr. Alzabek is saying, public welfare in the context of property value, that's what, he may consider that. You may not. That's, that's you. And, and you'll have to, in your, whatever decision you make, if it's relying on property value, you're going to have to articulate your, your conclusions are long, your findings are fact. We get it. But we do know, let's put aside property value a second, what the impact would be. Is it compatible with the neighboring uses? And we've had testimony that it was not.
And we've had testimony that it is.
Well, I, I agree. You then need to look at the credibility of the evidence presented by the various experts and weigh that. And that's how you come, but I just want to make sure that you, that's not an oversight on your part, that this has been alleged by the objectors, this is not going to be compatible with the neighboring uses, and it's going to have an adverse effect on the use and enjoyment of their property and their property values. And one last thing, there has never been, and I know you say that we could have produced a view shed to see whether or not, for example, the Monys are going to see the light, or the Winters are going to see the light. Remember, it's their burden to prove. And if you feel in your mind that the light from this gas station at 4:00 in the evening, when it's winter time, is not going to have a negative impact, that's your, but there's no evidence to suggest that it won't. And the burden, I believe, was on them, they, they did not, sure, they have their, their studies which show how far the, the, the light cast off their site, but that's not what you're going to see when you're looking out your window from the neighbor's house. And so, and in any case, I can field any other questions you like, Madam Chair, or any members of the board.
Any member of the panel have any questions? Okay. Rob?
Just add two points to the server bottom.
Sure.
It's worth, it's worth just two seconds on this value issue because the record was, did discuss, there's extensive discussion in the record.
On what?
On the valuation issue. And what Mr. Hul said is it was not in his report because it's not a criteria in your ordinance, as you pointed out. But he did do the analysis, and he testified orally, it's in the record and we cite it. He said he did consider values because he normally does that in zoning matters, because in a variance, it is a factor, but it's not a factor in the special use permit. And what he concluded was that there is a diminution of value when there's a commercial use, and it equals about 10%. And then he testified, he confirmed with your tax assessor that all the Main Road properties are already diminished, and this is what, it's already baked in, discussion here. So I just want to remind you of that. And so, and then the second thing I would, I would point out is that with respect to the light casting, that is the scientific criteria. Again, you're going to see whatever's there. So we took it upon ourselves to make sure that the light shed does not creep out beyond the, beyond, on the borders. So we do think we've minimized the impact to the point that we meet the criteria with respect to impact, and including value, and I, including value, I'll stop, I'll stop there. Thank you. Any further questions, I'm happy to answer.
I remember, can I ask you this? I follow up my question to him. I asked him, "Did you do a study on that? On a study being built?" He said, "I did a study of gas station already existed, including the one next to my house." I said, "Did you do any study of station you were building new?" And he said, "No, I did not." I said, "I want a study of property value of station just being built, not pre-existing." And he said, "I never did." So yes, he did not do any. So, sorry. He had three property that already existed, a gas station for years and years, of property values.
Okay. I would just remind you that every property is either statistically revalued periodically three years in a row. So, so properties are revalued, and then they sell, and the value and the impact is there. So he has data with that, that response to that. Thank you.
Well, at this point, we are going to close the public hearing to deliver, to bring out our deliberations, and hopefully we can get here.
Can we take a break?
Oh, of course. We'll have a 10-minute recess, please. Okay, so we've now closed our session, and we're, this is an opportunity for the board to debate it, discuss it, see if we can reach a consensus. And George, why don't you go first, since you have the mouth?
How are we doing this? Are we going to-
I think we should, let's have an informal discussion.
Did we start at a particular-
So, my, so my recommendation would be, I gave you all what I call a jury sheet, cheat sheet on each of the uses. You need to find, for each of this special use permit, you need to fit these criteria. So I gave you a sheet for each one. One was the gasoline fill-in station, one was the restaurant with the drive-through, and the other was the special use permit. Those all have their criteria on there. I would start with one. You, you know, obviously you could grant one, not grant one, you know, depends, but you need to find facts and, and point to evidence in the record that support or deny each of those ones. So, but they all have to be done on a separate basis. So that's what I would recommend.
So you want to take a particular special use permit request?
First.
One of the three?
Yes, I would-
We select one.
Yes.
And then we go through each of the six criteria.
I think that's the fairest way to do it.
And you have each person address each criteria?
Yes.
I can't work like this. I am, I have a mouth, and I don't have this.
It's right in front of you.
Yeah, I can't work like this.
Well, that, we have to build a record?
We got to follow the law, and we got to find facts.
This is, give it to me tonight.
It's in the briefs, it's been in the-
The memos, it's in everything.
So, so can we make a decision that we're going to talk about one special use, which one are we going, which one are you going to, you first?
Well, why don't we start with the gas station?
The pumps, okay. So the pumps will be first.
Okay. Let's start with the pumps.
So you want to start with, well, obviously, A, I mean, the first one, public convenience and welfare will be served?
Well, let Mr. Alzabek state what he needs to state, and you guys can work off that and figure out how they fit into the criteria, if they do or do not, and then you guys can all kind of discuss it. But it's very important, and I want to just stress this to the board, because I've stressed this since we got this case. I don't care, it's not my rule to tell you which way to rule or not rule. You need to find facts in the record that support your position. This is not about your personal opinion, this is about facts in the record. So to the extent that you believe the public welfare will be served or not served, tell me why and the facts in those record. Tell me why, what testimony you rely upon, what information you rely upon. That's your role, because if you don't do that, and it gets appealed one way or another, the court will send it back and say you didn't do your job. So it's very, excuse me, Ms. Alzabek, so it's very important that you have an extensive record here tonight. You've had this record now for about three weeks. Both sides did an excellent job of referencing the record and putting it together. So that's what I'm imploring you to do, because that is what this board has to do. So you need to find facts, and if you agree with an expert or disagree with the expert, I need you to put on the record why you're accepting that expert's testimony over another person's expert, or if you found someone credible, and, or someone not credible, you need to tell me, tell me, tell the board and the, and the record why you're making those findings.
So, me and you butted head through this hearings all along, that I absolutely find a couple of experts that just paid mouth. They literally, I believe I outweigh both of their experts, what they say, because this is what I did for a living for 40 years. And the way they laid their cases, me and you argued on this table, that I believe they, I don't want to call them liars, they get paid. This is what they do. They're here to put a case, paid case, like every other case, every other court, everywhere we're here, this on TV, these people paid to represent a case for the client to build what they want, or prove somebody guilty or not guilty. I disagreed how they did it, and you said to me, but that's their expert. I disagree. This is how I believe it, because this is what I do. This is what I do for a living, for God's sake.
That's fine. Tell me what, on the record, do you disagree with those findings of the expert's? That's all.
Excellent. You told me at the time, you know, this is not what we're here for, this is, we have to go with what they have. Okay. So this is what I believe. This gas station, the way they lay it on the ground right now, as it's built, totally unsafe, does not work. Does not work as a gas station owner who built, owned six gas stations at one time, who watched thousands of millions of gallons delivered to gas station. I gave them the opportunity to fix it, and I've said to them a hundredth time, I said it, millionth time, I took the picture and held it, and I bring it out again. This is two-lane of traffic. Please, I plead with you a hundred times, I said it to them.
What are you referring to, so the record can-
I, I don't have a number on it. This is out of their book.
Okay, well, it should have a number on it.
It doesn't. This is out of their book.
Well, we're going to mark it for today.
I don't know what it is. I took it right out of-
Well, I know, but George, the problem is, is when you refer to something, and it gets part of the record, I have to be able to refer back into the record of what it is. So if you want to mark it, we'll mark it as George's Exhibit 1.
Sir, it's out of their book. Three pictures out of their book.
Okay, there are millions of pictures in this book, George. I'm asking you to do this the right way.
Okay, mark it. Exhibit 1, George, Exhibit 1.
All right, thank you.
So my, my problem was with it. I have said to them when they brought here that you, there are studies out of every gas station they had, they're always two-lane on each side. You build these big stations, four-lane of traffic, two each ways. This in Tiverton, two-lane traffic, one on each side. It's very hard to build these big stations and expect to make this big amount of traffic, make these big deliveries, and put your truck delivery right at the entrance of the gas station. It does not work. You cannot make a delivery. And I always said to them, "We're not talking about a nice sunny day, not a problem, truck comes in to make a delivery. It's when we really have a snowy miserable day and trying to make a delivery." And I said to their traffic expert, "The speed is really fast these days, right, sir?" He said, "Yeah, people drive a little faster." I calculated for him at the time. I said, "The speed on Main Road right now is 35 miles an hour. Everybody driving over 35% extra." He said, "Yeah, like 50 miles an hour right now." Yeah, absolutely. You look at this traffic, and there's no shoulder for people to go around anybody who wants to pull a gas station. You're going 50 miles an hour, somebody trying to pull in, your truck trying to make a delivery, and they're going to rear end them. It is unsafe to pull into a gas station or a truck trying to pull in, into a gas station, and a truck trying to make a delivery at the entrance. I took a video, my attorney said I cannot present this video or make it like a part, took a video of two gas stations they have, the delivery is right at the entrance, it does not work. It is unsafe to build that gas station the way they're trying to build it. I am totally against the station being built this way. I gave them every opportunity to fix it, and they refused. What they did, they moved the building, they originally came in front of us, and he, this is what I do. They moved the tank when they came right in front of us in the beginning, the tanks were to the left of the building, they moved the tank because they want to appease whatever us for the drive-through, to move it, little building to the left, and they put the delivery in the front. Totally killed this project. If it was even remotely acceptable before, it's totally unacceptable right now. It's unsafe. To the welfare, to the people, and the safety of the people in Tiverton now totally does not work in two-way traffic, two-lane traffic, does not work. It's unsafe, totally unsafe, at a 50 miles an hour with a curved road, the way it comes down in Tiverton. It does not work. If it doesn't fit, we cannot build it. It does not fit, period. This is on that point. This is what I do for a living. I have a gas station in two-lane traffic, I have an accident in front of my station every other week. You guys watch the traffic, call the police. I have two-lane traffic in front of my station, and I literally have accident every two weeks. I sell 160,000 gallons a month. They're going to sell a lot more than that, and we have accident every two, three weeks in front of the station. It's on the record. They're going to have a lot more than that. And my traffic in front of my station a lot slower. People, it's on Facebook. They will have an accident literally every day in front of that gas station. I have nothing to hide. It's in front of my station, people sees it on Facebook all the time. That's on that point. I could, that's about it, Charles.
Who would like to go next?
Mine next.
So I just stress that you need to look at the standards that are before you, and each of those standards have to be either met or not met.
Well, I think we should have sort of a general discussion about where we are on this project, so we can try to narrow it, see if we can find consensus.
I think there were two expert witnesses who spoke on this topic. One was Mr. Hul, who felt that there was, that this particular proposed use will provide service to the, that community. And he also said that it would be a tax, a Tiverton tax-based increase. Mr. Fredricks, who represented the, the-
Objectors.
The objectors, also said that it will provide some convenience to the patrons who do not have to venture a short way down Main Road to the nearest gas station, a convenience store, a cafe, or even the 24-hour shell and forward or four miles away. So that part, they both seem to agree on. But then, Mr. Fredricks said that the mild public convenience and boom to the welfare through additional low-wage job opportunities and property tax revenue is exceeded by public inconvenience in unsightly fuel pumps, which are visible from the Osborne-Bennett Historic District.
Excuse me, can you talk into the microphone?
Yeah, use your microphone. All right, let me read that again. He said that this mild public convenience and boom to welfare through additional low-wage job opportunities and property tax revenue is exceeded by public inconvenience in unsightly fuel pumps visible from the Osborne-Bennett Historic District, and also that continued fossil fuel consumption is also eroding, eroding community welfare through climate change. And now, these, first of all, the fuel pumps. Every gas station has fuel pumps. And if we say that we have to deny this part, this particular criteria, we would have to say that fuel pumps are not allowed in any gas station, which is, which we can't, that's beyond our authority. So I don't think we can say that. And I don't think that fossil fuel consumption, eroding our community welfare is, is something, that's true of every gas station. So I, I find that there's kind of a wash there. I, I don't, I don't agree that fuel pumps' visibility is, is a problem, or something that's within our authority, let's put it that way, and that fossil fuel consumption is eroding. So I, I have no, I can't deny this particular criteria.
Yeah, that's the public convenience and welfare standard you're talking about.
This is, yeah, this is, yes, the first one.
Thank you.
Your turn.
I agree with Dave. I'm making sure my microphone's on. It's really hard to hear you guys. I agree with Dave, and pretty much everything he just said, except to add that the Pimentel report was really helpful when it comes to, you know, revenue streams for the town, tax base, of course, and then the welfare of the public, or, I'm sorry, not the welfare, the public convenience and welfare will be served. I mean, there's a very, I mean, there's been so much case law on this and what we, what our criteria needs to be.
Just bring the mic to you or come up to the mic.
No, it's on.
It's on. Just get closer to the mic.
Thank you, everyone.
Everybody hears George.
Because I hold the mic the way I'm supposed to hold the mic, Mike. It's simple. That's why they hear me.
Yeah?
I don't fall asleep. Maybe.
I'm going to leave my statement brief and say that I do agree with the Pimentel report. There's a ton of evidence in the record that I'm sure the courts will review after this.
Except that, and I appreciate that, but it's not the court's job to review your record, it's your job to find those evidence in the record that you support. So if you have specific parts in the Pimentel report you'd like to highlight, that would be helpful. And you did reference some of them, so I, there were some, but I, you just can't say, "I rely on the Pimentel report." You need to be a little bit more specific on that. "I rely on the Pimentel report." You need to be a little bit more specific on that. And we can, the report's in front of you or whatever, so.
Yes, sorry. I feel like I'm gonna throw up.
I'm just trying to make a record, gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm not trying to be, put you on the spot.
No, I appreciate that.
I have a job to do, too.
No, I know. Bear with me, guys, sorry. There's a lot of information that we went through over the past twelve months.
Fourteen months.
Fourteen months.
I was counting.
But anyway, I'm going, I don't know how far I can go into depth on this right now, but I am going to say that, you know, Mr. Pimentel did make a lot of references to economic streaming, what it's going to benefit the town, not necessarily the neighbors directly, but the town as a whole, the community as a whole. And, and I did not see, I did not see compelling evidence to go against that from the other sides, unfortunately. Or, I'm sorry. I did not see compelling evidence to go against his report from an, from an expert.
Jake?
We could hear that.
I'm sorry. We're looking at the first criteria is the public convenience and welfare will be served. And let me, let me...
How is this, I didn't understand her comment, applied to that?
Well, that's for her, that's her, okay. That's, that's, I can't, that's her opinion and that's...
This is, this is closed.
Yeah, this is.
We are deliberating. So, we, this can't be a question-and-answer exercise at this point, okay? So, we're...
So, yeah, so let me just...
I thought I was the chairperson.
I'll read, I'll just read for the record. I know the board got a memo from us, from me. Just so you understand, this is the first element. The public convenience and welfare will be served. The round Supreme Court in South Bay Virginia College versus zoning Board Review lays out the standards for meeting the public convenience and welfare requirement as follows. When applying for grant of a special exception or special use, an applicant must preliminarily show that relief sought is reasonably necessary for the convenience and welfare of the public. We have said, however, that a zoning board may not deny granting a special exception to a permitted use on a ground that the applicant had failed to prove that there is a community need for its establishment. The rule is that satisfaction of a public convenience and welfare precondition will hinge on a showing that a proposed use will not result in conditions that will be inimical to the public health, safety, morals, and welfare. In addition, we have interpreted zoning ordinances that bear public convenience and welfare standard as requiring that an applicant for a special exception must introduce competent evidence that neither the proposed use nor its location on the site would have a detrimental effect upon public safety, wealth, and morals. Excuse me, safety, welfare, and morals. So, one and two kind of go together, as the courts have interpreted. So, we're kind of dealing with one and two. Which is, the second standard is it will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, morals, and welfare. So, that's the, if we're focusing on facts for that right now, that's the facts we need to either support or deny based upon the facts that are in the record.
You're saying we should also, we should have...
Number one and two?
The second.
It, they can be, they can be, yeah.
I haven't got to.
Yeah, no, that we, that's fine.
I didn't talk about number two either.
We can get to two as well. But I'm just letting you know that. You could do this separately, but one and two go, to be read together.
Okay.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I'm looking at the public health there. Mr. Simpson, their engineer, stated that there's possibilities that there's still hydrocarbons left over from the last commercial use that was on that property, that being oil tanks and delivery to trucks. So, he specified that that would all be cleaned up and any water, that subsurface water that's captured there would have to be removed and cleaned up as part of this project. So, I think that's a, a big public safety issue that, that's in my mind as this, you know, progressed.
I guess it's my turn. I believe that the public convenience will be served. Welfare, I'm saving my comments to a different criteria that's listed that talks about nuisance and pedestrian vehicular traffic. But I agree that this was formerly, I've lived in Tiverton for thirty-four years, and when I first moved here, we had a bunch of oil tanks on the hill overlooking the bay. And, you know, it was pretty ugly and pretty contaminated. And I thought Mr. Simpson was an excellent witness. He testified that, that they feel that it's best, because this groundwork is contaminated, but does not rise to the level of being a brownfield, that they would remediate the hydrocarbons and any other pollution and the groundwater. And clearly, there are people that live in the neighborhood that are passing by, and there will be people that are coming from Portsmouth on Route 24, whose car will tell them, "You're out of gas." And the closest gas station is Seasons on Main Road. And there's no question that they will be getting traffic from people going from Newport, Portsmouth Middletown, to Boston, or, or wherever they're going. But I think it'll, it will serve that regional need as well as the local need. Mr. Pimentel, who's been mentioned in so many of these legal cases that we've been reading, is, the Supreme Court recognizes him as an expert, and he was stipulated to as an expert by the, the abutters and the objectors. We have a very limited commercial area here in town, and many of us like it that way. You know, we like the way it is. And we like, we came here for peace and quiet, and, believe me, I get it. But we do have to increase our commercial tax base. And, you know, we only have Stafford Road, a little bit of Stafford Road and a little bit of Main Road to conduct our commercial business. And by having the gas station and restaurant function as a conditional permitted use, the, our town council has said they find this compatible with the neighborhood. And, and we can't say we just, no, we disagree with your zoning. I mean, they're the ones that get to delineate what, where's commercial and where's residential. And while we may not agree with the fact that they're up against each other, we still have a decision by our town council that says this is a commercial area and it should be used for commercial purposes. And the only way we can exclude this project is if we find that the standards for the special use permits have not been satisfied with respect to this gas station, restaurant, convenience store at this specific location. Focusing on public versus private convenience, this, I think that they, the petitioner has shown by substantial evidence that this is a public convenience. He's also testified about removing the contaminants from the soil. He spoke about the construction of gas stations and the tanks, the vapor recoveries that they have, the water, you know, from runoff, how they, they handle that. And, you know, so I think that the scientific basis of, that relates to the pollution and to the fact that they're using state-of-the-art equipment, double-hulled gas station, tanks, and the vapor containment, I think is, pretty much deals with the safety aspects of the, the infrastructure of the gas station. Now, I know that Mr. Pimentel had made some errors in his testimony, you know, by him saying that we're responsible for design, I think was inaccurate. And I thought he may have made the mistake as a, you know, slip of the tongue, but it was, you know, three or four pages of dialogue about whether we were here to talk about whether we approved the design or whether we, we approved the six standards for special use permits. But I still think that substantial evidence has shown that it is a convenience, a public convenience, and that the, the technical aspects of, of the gas station would be done safely and would protect the public. Want I go to sound?
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna, I didn't speak about the second one.
We haven't, we haven't done the second one yet.
Okay.
Well, I'm gonna go for the first one.
Well, we're talking about, well, public welfare being served.
I'm gonna go for the first one. I, first of all, I'm not gonna give them that much first credit about cleaning the property, because the property cleaned by itself. Funny that they, he took that much credit for himself. The property, the reason they brought all the tanks dirt all the way to the top, because it's been cleaning itself for thirty years. This is what they've been doing, turning the property over.
George, this is never gonna pass muster in, in the courts. You're not, you're not an expert. You've never been qualified as an expert.
I didn't, I didn't interrupt you by giving them credit. I'm telling you how it works. I didn't interrupt you. I'm just telling you my opinion. So, it turns over, it cleaned itself by itself. I disagree for the fact it is not supposed to be a regional property. The town council didn't, did that property as a commercial property as a regional. I disagree with the fact that we should allow it to be a regional coming from Portsmouth, Boston. This should be a local traffic. This is not opening Main Road for, Main Road for the people to be a regional traffic. It's a shame if we allow it to be, to turn into a regional. If you live in that neighborhood, it's a shame on us if we turn it into a regional supplying gas station.
Can you cite one of our criterion that we're supposed to consider that deals with that issue?
I'm just, I'm just supplying, as you all spoke, I'm just going by this fact that this should not, as Mr. Stolzmann and all the expert, I called them out on it, this is, if we build it for regional, that should not be acceptable at all, acceptable at all, at all, as a regional gas station. The town council did not approve it.
That's not a criterion, whether it's a regional gas station or not.
You just said it yourself. You just said it. You said it.
I'm finding it on facts. I'm not attributing it to the town council.
You said it to the town council as a gas station.
Let me, let me just read the status of the law. It says, "The fact that a particular use is allowed in a zoning district by special use permit means that the municipal council has determined that it is appropriate use for the district and it cannot be excluded by decisions of the zoning board or review unless the standards for, for the special use permit are not satisfied with respect to its establishment of a particular location or site." Now, when we refer to the council, now, we're not referring to this council. We're referring to a council that put this through many, many years ago as a legislative act. However, that does not mean that it has to be granted automatically. You still have to meet the standards of a special use permit. And what I hope this board is trying to do, and I hope Mr. Alzberg would try to do...
You don't need the majority vote. You get to vote.
I'm leaving. Have a good night.
You don't need the majority vote. You know exactly how you're voting. Have a nice night.
No, no, George. You're not an expert. We'll have a recess right now.
You need to let me talk. You're not gonna interrupt me.
You're not gonna run the meeting either. And guess what? You happen to be a competitor of this gas station. You've put yourself up as an expert, and why you're sitting on this is questionable to me.
I responded to your exact words, exact words.
Let me just take a recess.
Responded to your exact words.
We need a recess.
Exact word. We're not a regional. We're not talking about...
It's not a criteria.
You brought it in as a criteria.
It's not a criteria.
You brought it in.
No, I said...
You brought it in as a criteria. I was not talking about it. You brought it in.
I'm commenting on facts that I'm finding in the record.
You brought it in.
Hello? Can we take a recess?
Yeah. Okay, folks, we're gonna go back on the record.
Karen, sorry, you're sick.
I know that we're not supposed to comment, but I'm really having a huge issue. I get that, that emotions are flying. I get that. But I'm a little bit concerned. You're gonna make a decision tonight, and all of you were just schooled about how you're supposed to make that decision. So, I'm a little concerned that tonight's the night that you're gonna make the decision, because the information that you have in front of you, what you have prepared in your head to address this, you don't even know how you're supposed to address it. So, tonight can't be the night. You just educated them how they're supposed to do it.
And I don't wanna step on the chairs. It's, that's a little unfair, ma'am. This, this board has had this record for at least the last three weeks, okay? Hold on, hold on, hold on. Let me, let me finish. They've had their record. They have gotten memos from all sides with the law. They have gotten all sides with disputed facts. They have gotten advice from me, memos from me regarding how we're gonna do this. This is no different than any other zoning case that we've heard in the past. It's a little bit more in the public view, because there's a lot, there's a lot of interest, and I, and I respect that. I do. But they're not doing anything that they normally. But to suggest that they're just getting this tonight, making a decision, that is totally unfair, because we have boxes. They've had this record for at least four weeks.
I'm not saying that they're just getting the information tonight. What I'm saying is, they're just understanding right now the process by which they deliberate on these things.
Oh, that's not true. This is the process we've used, this is the process we use for every board.
They just asked, "How are we supposed to do that?"
No, I asked them, no, I, no, that's, they, they apply these criteria in many, many cases. The only thing I'm asking them to do is pay a little more particular attention to, is that when they make a decision based upon these criteria, that they reference facts in the record that they've had for the last three or four weeks. That's all. Normally, we don't get the record for three or four weeks. Normally, they hear a case and they, then they decide it right then and there. But in this case, we've had the benefit of a record for forty, at least, at least thirty-five or forty-five days. That's all I'm saying. Well, I mean, what you're witnessing, what you perceive to be witnessing are two different things.
Let me, let me tell you something. For fourteen months, we have been doing this. I have spent the last two weeks, six hours a day, reading the case law, reading the facts, the transcript, the, the briefs. And the problem that I'm having is that the court's interpretation of these factors that we have to apply has changed over time. The law's not particularly consistent. I am trying to do the right thing by everybody. I have no set opinion about which way I'm gonna even vote yet, because I wanted to hear from all my other members about the points that they would bring up that I may have missed. But don't ever suggest that we don't know what the hell we're doing here, because we've been working our asses off to get this stuff done, to be ready for tonight. You know, these are all my notes. So, I don't, just sit down. This is not a public comment situation. We're gonna continue with this meeting, and we're gonna make a decision. And I'm sorry if you don't like what we're doing, but do not ever demean this board, because we all have our opinions, but we listen to each other.
This, this after a high school fight that we just witnessed.
You, you seem like knowledgeable. You did your job. You did your studying. I can see that your legal points, you studied. But other members are not prepared to deliberate.
They're deliberating.
All right, hold on. Sure, sure. I appreciate your comments. I, I understand. I understand. But really, that, really, and I, and I appreciate this stuff. If the board wants to move forward tonight, they're gonna move forward. If they want to not move forward, that's it. But we are way off the record now. We are way off the record. I am, unfortunately, yes.
When they are deliberating after fourteen months, they should have something to convince us.
It's not, it's, it's not for them, it's not for them to convince you, sir. It's for them to convince themselves based on the record. I understand, but that's not the standard, sir. That's, as I said from the very beginning, if this was based on purely a popularity contest, obvious, hold on, hold on, hold on. Or, or what the, but they are constrained by the law and the facts. And, and, well, I just want to, they are constrained by the law and the facts as they understand them. And that's what they're trying to do. They have, they've gone through one prong of, of six.
Only one person convinced me that she had done her job.
Well, that's, that's your opinion, and I, and I appreciate, all right. All right. We're not gonna, we're, I don't think, okay, thank you. All right. All right.
Okay.
Next prong.
Please be quiet. The next factor will be, is that it's not detrimental to the public health, safety, morals, or welfare. Why don't you take it away, George? Sorry? Do you have anything to say?
Sure. Okay. The town does not have specific requirements for this. The petitioner, however, has selected a, a group of topics that I think I've got correct here. They've addressed noise. They've addressed light, site safety, traffic impact, property value. I think that belongs in this category. And the possibility of car backup onto Souza, onto Souza Road. So, I'm gonna take each one of those. The first was noise. This is record 0449, that the petitioner, I believe it was Eric Simpson, said that he went out with a sound level meter and...
You got, please, she's trying to take this down. We're trying to create a record. So, if you could keep the chatter or the comments to yourselves. But she can't, no, she can't hear both. It's, it's a background noise. So, just, 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 just listen. Be polite to the members. Just please listen and let him make his statement, so the court reporter can create a record, so that if this does get appealed one way... so that if this does get appealed one way or another, we have a clean record. And that's all we're asking. Just, we're all adults in the room. I get it's hot in here and tempers are high, but we have a job to do. You may not like the job that we're doing. I appreciate that. But let them do their job and let's be respectful to one another, and let's certainly be respectful to the court reporter who's probably got the hardest job here tonight. So thank you. Sorry, George. I mean, sorry. Okay.
Okay, so the witness.
Dave. It's a long night for me, too.
The witness, Mr. Simpson, stated that he went with a light meter to a similar site and was not able to measure any sound coming from the monitors on the pumps at a distance greater than 15 feet. We were also told that the traffic noise would far exceed the noise from the pumps. And so we also know that the town has a noise ordinance that prohibits noise levels greater than 70 dB A at the property boundary. And the town ordinance indicates that the sound level of 70 dB A is equivalent to the sound from a vacuum cleaner at the boundary of the, the site. And there's no, I, I could not detect any sound anywhere near detectable, no less than 70 dB A at the boundary. So I, I didn't, I'm, I'm okay with the noise level. I don't think there's a problem there. As far as light goes, again, we're, we're looking at record 0449. And the only requirement the town has is that the light be pointing down and all of their light is report, pointing down. And we had plenty of evidence from, from Mr. Simpson that the, and again, this is record 0449. We had plenty of evidence that indicates that light intensity off-site will be minimal. We can assume that any gas station is going to have to have light in there at, at night for the safety of the people in, in the parking lot. So there was no evidence that the light intensity from the lights in the Cobea property would, would exceed, would be greater than any other light, gas station. As far as traffic, oh, as far as site safety goes, we really only had one expert and they went through the, they talked about crosswalks and signage and lighting and all of the things you would never, you would typically talk about for safety. There was some discussion as to whether or not trucks parking might cause delay in flow and that's, and, and possible safety. However, Mr. Meth, who is the expert witness for Preserve Tiverton and I guess the, the neighbors, indicated that there's no known correlation between time delay and safety. So any delay or impact that a truck might cause in loading or unloading fuel would not be a safety issue. As far as the traffic safety, there were two witnesses that were heard. One was Mr. Severin, who is the author of a report that we received, and Mr. Meth for Preserve Tiverton, who did not present a report. Both of these documents were traffic input analysis reports prepared in accordance with RIDOT specifications. They had to prepare these reports because of the fact that a physical alteration permit was required on Main Road. So these reports had to be put together. There are actually two sections to this report. One is a safety analysis section, which contains crash data and is required to have a safety analysis, which is line of sight per the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials standard. The other section of the report is the capacity analysis, which is, which uses the Institute of Traffic Engineers standards, which, which is, does not cover safety, but does cover level of service, including queue length and, and delay time. The traffic impact analysis by PAR Corporation, which was dated November in 2023, which is the record 0104, is specific to the Cobea project and addresses safety analysis and capacity. Both safety analysis and capacity analysis, which are required by Rhode, Rhode Island Department of Transportation. As far as safety, his analysis was based on data collected by, what's the name of the, it's, what is it? Transportation data? A particular professional organization that goes out and collects data. We've seen them before. And crash data, which comes from the town of Tiverton Police Department. And that data was collected over a period of, from 2018 to 2020, where they indicated that there was one accident per year, which is, in my opinion, not a lot. And the, there, in that period, none of the accidents resulted in injury to, to anybody. So I think that that section of their report is, is a good, a good section. As far as site distance is concerned, that's the major safety topic. That's the topic, that's the, the analysis that traditionally we require by, we require that safety distance be determined using the American Association requirement that they used. And the, the report indicates that site distances were met, assuming that there's some site clearing of trees. Mr. Meth, who was the expert witness for Preserve Tiverton and a butter, stated that the PAR report prepared in 2022 is not reflective of current.
Point of information.
Sir, sir, there's no, there's no information.
Gentleman's features at 51 decibels. That's barely the sound of a quiet running dishwasher.
I'm sorry, sir. This is not an opportunity. The, the hearing is closed and we're trying to deliberate.
We're, we're just asking for you to hear that system.
Just get, just get closer to the mic.
Your, your actions are public. We, the, the community deserves to hear what you're saying. You, you are at, this gentleman is at a minimum of 50 decibels. That's a quiet.
We are not taking evidence now, sir. Please sit down. If you can't, if you can't be quiet, please leave.
Just get a little closer to the.
Is this better?
Yes.
Mr. Meth indicated that the, the analysis that was done by PAR was not reflective of current traffic conditions because they were done after school was out for the summer. And Mr. Meth was, said PAR could have considered past studies and pre-pandemic time periods. The, the interesting part of this is that the data that was collected was. Okay. Is this better? Even?
Yeah.
Okay. First, first of all, we know that RIDOT reviewed and accepted the impact report. That, and that that we were not, there was no pre-pandemic report provided to us, so we don't have that as evidence. Mr. Meth was concerned about the split in the driveway on Main Road. He say, he was concerned that people would enter the exit lane. He stated that RIDOT has stated in the PAP approval letter that this could not be a split driveway, which is not true. Mr. Meth was concerned about the location of the crosswalk and the RIDOT made it quite clear to us that we don't have the authority to determine whether or not there's a crosswalk or where it's going to be located, that that has to be determined by the State Traffic Commission. So that's outside of our authority. Mr. Saltzman indicated tonight that the, that they haven't gone to the, the State Traffic Commission yet, so to, to get a, a crosswalk approval. So that's beyond our authority and it, and there hasn't been any activity on that as yet anyway. So I don't have any problem with that. As far as the capacity is concerned, that's the level of service. It's, the level of service is calculated for a time period beginning with present time to some point in the future using the ITE models. Anyway, the, it's an important part of the, the analysis to have that traffic data because you can use it to verify the accuracy of your models. For future analysis, you have to use models that are specified by, by ITE. And the only way you can do that accurately is to do a site test, site check, and then verify that, that, that the results of the, of your analysis are consistent with the actual measured data. Mr. Meth indicated that he had not done any traffic data analysis or measuring. What we do know is that the 2013 impact, oh, by the way, the, we have a, a document that was prepared by Tiverton Crossing 10 years ago. And that was used as a reference by the Preserve Tiverton. This was a 2013 impact report, which assumed a 400,000 square foot shopping center, a general office building of 36,000 square feet, a condo and a townhouse with 150 units, a hotel with 100 units, and a restaurant with 22,000 square feet, a huge, huge area, which compared with the, and by the way, this particular document did not have a professional engineering stamp, which is a state requirement. And it didn't have the, a section on site distance, which is a state requirement. Both are required by RIDOT in, in preparing the, the report for the, for the PAP and application. So there's some suggestion there that because this report didn't meet state standards, that it might not have been the final copy that was submitted to RIDOT. And it certainly couldn't have been approved without having a PE stamp. So there's some suggestion that there is a, a document that we can't ask questions on because the person who wrote it is unknown and it would, it would have been written 10 years ago. So we weren't able to ask that person whether or not we actually had a real document, a final document that was approved by RIDOT. the, the analysis of capacity, which is the level of service, requires that you use certain models that are provided by ITE. And, and the models you select are based on the size of the project. And because, and, and Mr. Meth stated that the, the trip counts in the 2013 traffic import, impact report are almost twice the counts used by PAR. Which considering the fact that the, the, the analysis was done on a site many, many times the size of, of the Cobea site, is not surprising. You would expect that the, that the, the traffic counts would, would not be, at least they wouldn't be close to each other. They would be many, many times. So the, the fact that the, that the trip counts in the 2013 report are twice what PAR had is, is not an indication of a problem with the PAR report, in my opinion. PAR, Mr. Meth did it, looked at, at the data that came out of the traffic report and it indicated that the, the level of service, which is rated on an A, B, C, D, E, F scale, should have been an F rated F while PAR rated it as E. E is acceptable. F is not acceptable. But because of the fact that the Meth report and data was questionable, we have no reason to believe that the, the Meth, that the PAR report was inaccurate. So I had no problem with that. Let's see. This, let's see if there's anything else I need. Incidentally, the, the 2013 crash data was pretty much consistent with the PAR data as far as the number of crashes over a three-year period. So that's, that's a good indication. Let's see. See if I can get ahead of here. It's getting kind of long.
Keep going. You're doing great.
Okay. So there were two RIDOT letters with comments on traffic input, on the traffic input studies. These are records 0442, and I don't know the other one. Anyway, the, the, those letters were approved and they, which indicates that traffic analysis is pretty much acceptable. I, I have, based on what I found, I, I had no problem with the traffic impact. As far as property values, that was a tough one. There, there was an analysis done by Steve Hendricks, where he tried to quantify the, the dollar increase or, or decrease, rather, in value of property. And I think that was the, the closest to usable evidence that, that I saw. Mr. Hul indicated that everything, he, who is a certified general appraiser, testified that property values have been set by commercial properties, and, and that seasons would have little impact. In other words, he's saying that they've already been impacted. Where Mr. Tobek, who is a real estate broker, testified that there would be significant financial input, impact. So as far as Mr. Hendricks' analysis goes, the, the only problem I had with that was that he always referred to as "the gas station." There was no indication that the model he used for a gas station was unique to the Cobea gas station. It could have been any gas station. So basically, what he was saying was that every gas station would have detrimental impact on the value of property in the neighborhood. And it would be the same, depending on, independent of who the gas station owner was. So I cannot find a problem with, with that, with the gas, with the gas station impact to property values. Now, as far as the car backup on the Susan Road, the state has a requirement for that. We don't have a requirement, but the state does. And the state says that they have to have 10, they have to be able to, must demonstrate that there is adequate space available to stack a minimum of 10 vehicles on-site. And there is a drawing, I've forgotten the number, that is in our package, that shows 10 vehicles in, in line going up to the, the drive-through. So as far as the state goes, on Main Road, the requirement is met. We don't have our own requirement, but I'm making, I, I believe that the state requirement is good enough for us, that we should be using the same requirement, because we have no other requirement. So the state is saying that 10 vehicles, spots for 10 vehicles on the lot is adequate.
It's record 91. It's record 91.
Record 91.
Zero, zero, nine, one.
Two. All right. I'm going to drop it there.
No, keep going. Please keep going. You're doing, you're doing great.
Thank you.
Do you have anything to add?
No.
Jay?
Actually, I do a little bit, but not, not well in-depth. I don't think you mentioned too, too much about the TG2 report with the, but, I'm sorry. I don't know if you've mentioned too much about the TG2 report about the fuel cleanup, but I know Lisi did, and...
Oh, I should have mentioned that, you're right.
Go for it.
We can put that in.
Yeah, do that.
I think you mentioned it, go ahead.
Lisi did, for sure.
Jay?
Yeah, Mr. Simpson, that was the report I was talking about.
Correct. That's right.
Um, I just have to agree with Dave. Mr. Meth talked about a level of service E. And I believe that was a discussion that was here that night, that went on quite a bit, that basically what the, what the level of service is at present is E, and it's not really going to change. And Mr. Shevlin, his traffic analysis spoke about delays impacts on the roadway network and its section in the vicinity of the project will be minimal when comparing with the future no-build to the future build conditions. So, just trying to back you up there a little bit, Dave, that's...
Fine, good.
I have, you know, I wanted to comment as far as Mr. Simpson's testimony on the sound, lights, and noise business. That was not disputed in any way by an expert that was called, that was called by the objectors. So I give full credibility to what Mr. Simpson's testimony was. The objectors' traffic expert did add questions in my mind about the issue of safety. Again, Mr. Meth testified that the applicant's projections were underestimated and failed to fully account for pedestrian risks and the intensification of traffic. He said that the development would hinder pedestrian movement and increase vehicular delays. But what I found most compelling about his testimony was that one needs to understand existing conditions now. The petitioner's traffic study in 2021 and 2022 did not impress me. It was conducted during COVID, when no one was going to work and schools were closed. They added a 20% increase in their totals. But, you know, that's such an arbitrary amount that, you know, I question how accurate it is, especially when you compare it to the counts in the 2013 study, which were totally disparate. I mean, I don't know how much weight we can give the 2013 study, because it was done so long ago. We've had no opportunity to cross-examine anybody. But what it, what it said to me was, the fact that PAR's analysis didn't consider school bus traffic or Saturdays was a real, a real problem for me. I think that, you know, that was really an infirmity and a limitation about how much we can rely on his report. It fails to assess the fact that the Main Road, as I, and I say this after 34 years of living here, is impassable, you know, from, from the time the school buses leave until the time they come and pick the kids up. Every school, elementary school, junior high school, and high school all have the same routes on Main Road. The traffic, I mean, I don't, I, I don't know anybody that would go down Main Road between 7:00 and 9:00, and between 2:00 and 5:00. Because you're, it's gridlock. I mean, the school, when I was in school, we stopped every mile or so to pick somebody up. But now, it's a, it's a process. I mean, it's, you know, they stop, they make the announcement over the microphone, which is probably louder than the, the drive-in speaker or the ads on top of the, the gas tanks. But it is gridlock, and you, it takes me two or three times the amount of time to get home than it would, because it stops, the monitor gets out, the kid gets out, they walk around the bus, they look under the bus, they come back, you know, she gets back on the bus, and then the loudspeaker comes on again. Now, this is not a problem that Cobea created. I mean, this is a problem that exists right now. And it is a disaster. It's an impassable road. Now, when we look at the issue of whether it's, there's an intensification of traffic, or public safety, or hazards that are created, you know, I don't, I don't know what to tell you, except for the fact that we did, one, the other thing that is very upsetting to me is that we have directly across the street an over 55 residential community, and we have diagonally across the street an elderly assisted living community. And someone was kind enough to, to get the records of that, the runs for the ambulance. And, Mrs. Herman, thank you. I mean, that shows that there are four runs to Brookdale, you know, almost every day. I mean, the totals were really surprising to me. I mean, there, there was never, no day that they weren't dispatched to Brookdale. And sometimes they ran four times a day. So if the buses are running at the same time the ambulances are running, no one's, they'll be, everybody will be suing Cobea, because they've been held captive trying to get out of the gas station. It's just, that is a congestion problem that is very troubling to me. It, it's a terrible intersection. You know, there are problems coming up from the, the villages at Mount Hope, where you can't, if you look to your left, you can't see anything. If you look to your right, you can't see anything. And, you know, north, coming from the north, Tiverton, you know, Route, Route Main Road goes downhill, goes around some bends, and there's nothing there except a few civilian garages for anybody to stop. So everybody picks up speed at the top of the hill, and by the time you're going through that intersection, you're doing 55. I mean, I've, I've seen it happen so many times, and I can only imagine that significant delays are going to occur going in and getting out of that gas station, with three extra driveways at that, at that intersection, basically. And it's only going to be exacerbated by cars that are trying to get in or try to get out of the gas station. There's nowhere to go. There's no shoulder that's of any significance. And, you know, I think was it Mr. Shevlin that suggested, hey, if, go around, go drive in the breakdown lane, which is unlawful in, in a state. So that caused me to, to question the credibility of PAR, of the PAR study. I can't ignore the fact that what's coming down the road is a very large residential development on Souza Road, which, right now, Souza Road is in really poor shape. There are no breakdown lanes on Souza Road. You can't even read the striping, you know, you can't see where the divider is. I mean, and there's a problem with, this was brought to our attention by the objectors' expert, that there's a lot of overgrowth on Souza Road that goes past where the Cobea site is, and it interferes with the site stopping distance going west toward Main Road, to the degree that the sight line couldn't be measured. That does not give me a whole lot of confidence in the safety of this intersection. And stopping distance is defined as a distance that must be visible for an oncoming vehicle to stop safely for a vehicle attempting to turn. And the PAR report recognized that nobody on Main Road or on Souza Road follows a speed limit. And that he posited that the average speed was 10 miles over the limit. I think it's probably more. But, so are we to believe that a car going westbound on Souza with no visibility is going to be able to stop when a car in front of them tries to take a right-hand turn into the gas station before you even get to Main Road? I mean, it's even closer than the intersection. Can that sight line ever be measured? Whose responsibility is to cut down the vegetation on that property? The 155 sight distance looking west does not meet the A, A, S, H, T, O minimum requirement of 305 and 345 for stopping sight and intersection distance. And then Mr. Par, or the PAR report says, however, it's anticipated that vehicles turning from Main Road to Souza Road will be traveling at a much lesser speed to be able to navigate the turn, and also vehicles exiting the site will be able to see cars turning from Main Road, which will allow them additional time to make a decision. Well, doesn't really make me very confident in the safety of that intersection. And assuming, including the report that assumes people will slow down, which has not been the case in terms of surveying present conditions. The Shevlin, Mr. Shevlin testified that there are very few accident reports in this area, and I know that the petitioner puts great weight on that. But I have to say, one can surmise, based on our own common experience, that police aren't called for every minor motor vehicle accident. People exchange insurance information, or they may choose to settle the matter on their own without going through insurance, and not involve the insurance companies. Given the lay of the land and the location here, there's no place for them to call, go and call the police. I mean, if they stop and they block traffic for, you know, however long it takes the police to arrive, and I don't think we're supposed to, I mean, I know the courts have said we're not supposed to use, you know, laypeople are not supposed to testify about traffic, but, you know, we're, I don't think we can leave our common sense by the door. You know, this is, this is stuff that we, that really gives me agita. But, you know, Cobea has made many concessions and changes to accommodate aesthetics and safety, but it can't change the infrastructure of what's on Route, on Main Road, or Souza Road, or Schooner Drive. And I fear that adding three more driveways to this mix intensifies the danger to pedestrians and the public. Whether we need another light, whether we need to widen the road to create turn lanes or put in a rotary, I don't know. But is there any way we can condition approval of this project on the site, on the state doing major infrastructure improvements? I already mentioned the Perron case, which, you know, was, I was flabbergasted by reading the language, that we can condition the granting of this, these special use permits, on the accomplishment of fixing up the road. And, you know, I'm, I, I still don't know how I'm going to vote on, on this whole application. But it seems to me, if there's a way that we can make a safe place for people, for them to use that land, as they have a right to do when they own it, I think we need to figure out, is there a way that we can lessen the impacts to the neighbors and assure that there's safety, and we're not going to have carnage on the highways at that intersection? Let me see. So I think that omitting Saturdays and omitting the school buses really affects the park count. But, but I'm, I'm also stuck by the language of our Supreme Court cases. Someone made a comment that we don't know what we're doing here. Well, you know, it's a, it's a hard job to try to harmonize the case law that has evolved over 60 years. You know, society has changed so much. And, you know, it used to be that, you know, if it was going to be increased traffic, that was a reason to deny a special use permit. Then it became, it's insufficient, because it's going to increase traffic. And then it's not, the only way you can deny it is, a Marion Crimson traffic at the location of a proposed use unaccompanied by a resulting intensification of traffic congestion or hazard at the site is not a valid zoning criterion. So, you know, I also look at the fact that new traffic is going to, if this project is granted, that there will be regional traffic coming off the highway. I mean, that's an increase, and it's beyond the pass, pass-by scenario that Mr. Shevlin testified to. But I, you know, I, I would like to see if there's any way that we can solve this problem by conditioning the grant of a special use permit upon the repair of a state highway. So that's basically what I have to say about that. Number three.
One second. The thing is, we, just a minute.
Sorry, I apologize, I would just, has one more to say. The thing, I, I agree with your description of that call with the report and everything. He, we also have that crosswalk, they agreed to put that crosswalk, you add that crosswalk to all that mess, the potential of having incident on that crosswalk is huge. Like, the speed, as I described earlier, and I've tried to say to him, as I was testified, the speed coming down that hill, not be able to see, on that crosswalk, add nothing but incidents, like, it does not work. It's just, that road, it, we need to, we need to divide that road, like, add another two lanes, and it's just not, it's not going to work. We just, it just doesn't, we cannot create road to fit a gas station in the neighborhood. Can't build a Taj Mahal in a town hall, in a town, small town like this. You can't. It doesn't fit. I know you, I own a gas station, supposed to be, not talk about this. But that's not really what I meant. It's a small town, I told them to... I told them to more than welcome to put a store. This is not what fits in that area.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay, we'll go on to the next. The proposed special use permit will be compatible with the neighborhood uses and not adversely affect the general character of the area.
So, if you just, I'll give you the standard. For a proposed use to be compatible with neighboring areas, it must be congruous, congruous with tolerant of and have no adverse effects upon existing neighborhood uses. Simply put, the use must be proper or reasonable in light of the surrounding neighborhood uses and must not adversely affect those uses. In making a finding of incompatibility, a board review is presumed to have special knowledge of matters that are particularly related to the administration of a zoning ordinance and of local conditions as they are affected by the provisions of the zoning ordinance. So now, your challenge is to find facts in the record which either support or refute those findings.
George?
I mean, I, I'll let David go. He enjoys the long stories. Go ahead, David. I'll let you start.
The long one's gone. The first thing I note is that this is not a prohibited use, which means that the town council recognizes-
Use the mic, David. Use the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. The town council recognized that there are situations where a gas station near a residential neighborhood is compatible with neighboring uses. So, I then looked to see if there's anything unique about gas, this particular gas station that would be different from other gas stations, that would lead me to believe that they should, this should not be permitted, and I don't see that. But I'm interested to hear what others say, because this is one that I'm not quite sure about.
All right. I'll go next. So, I, what I struggle with with David saying, the town council or not, this is a general commercial. It's not a gas station. It's a store. So, the town has no problem permitting store being built on that property. The council put that property to be built as a store, some kind of store, not a gas station. Gave us the right to decide if we could put a gas station there or not. If they thought it would be okay to put a gas station, they would permitted it from the beginning as a gas station. It's up to us to decide, one second, please. It's up to us to decide if it's okay to put a gas station.
Based on the standards that we-
Right, right. So, it's not this gas station or that gas station to go there. It is the fact that council said you could open and go open a shop there if you want, open a convenience store like the one on the water by Campbell and Farm that's been there for 40 years and more. You're more than welcome to. That's what it's zoned for. That's it. Not us to say, yeah, the town council said you put a gas station there. Not us to say, you know, the council said you could do that. They're more than welcome to put a store there if they want, period.
To play devil's advocate on that, wouldn't they say that instead of a special use permit, they would say not permitted NP on the zoning regulation?
No, no, no. The fight is for us to say, yes, you're more than welcome to put there. It fits in the neighborhood as a store, and we could go to sleep.
So, I just want to remind you of the law again, because, as I read in your memo, the fact that a particular use is allowed in a zoning district by special use permit means that the municipal council has determined that it is appropriate use for the district, and it cannot be excluded by decision of the zoning board review unless the standards of the special use permit are not satisfied with respect to the establishment of a particular location or site. So, you still have to find those standards. But the idea that they could just put a store is not the full story. It's a store plus a special use permit that you can put gas pumps. That's the status of the law, and that's what you need to be focusing on.
Did you say anything else?
I did, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is it my turn?
Yeah, I guess it's your turn.
Okay. Well, this is another close call for me. You know, is it compatible with neighboring uses and not adversely affect the character of the area? Well, you know, this is a metaphysical question when you've got a general commercial district right next to a residential district. And I can't quarrel with the zoning, the way it's written. It's the way it is. You know, there are a lot of ways, I mean, we have Mr. Hool testifying that this is a commercial district, and it's very similar to what exists on Main Road. You have businesses, service businesses, retail businesses up and down Main Road, and you have residential behind, residential areas that are, that are behind Main Road. Again, the legislature that made the zoning districts the way they are and created a special use permit for gas stations seems to suggest that this is continuity and harmonious with the Main Road corridor. And I think that, you know, we look at buffering and limitations on signage that, you know, protect the neighbors, such as hours of operation, which might be able to fix the noise factor that the neighbors are concerned about. You know, we add the buffering to protect the houses across Souza Road, and we may create more of a stop site problem coming down Main Road if people are turning into that particular, if people are going down Main Road and take a right at Souza and then want to go in that Souza Road entrance. I mean, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, but it's, you know, we have two different, we have two different opinions on that. And in one of the cases, that one of the parties suggested, you know, we had an expert, Peter Scotty, testifying that that property near a gas station increases the value of the neighborhood property, which is sort of hard to get. And this is, these are what we're grappling with, you know? Different people say different things. And, so, as far as, you know, the Osborne-Bennett district, you know, I'm sympathetic, and I share everybody's concerns about the preservation of historic property. But number one, this is not in the historic district, and number two, it's barely visible. I mean, I think it's one place that's visible. And if we cut the hours down, it's not going to affect the visibility or character. I mean, it's hard to talk about something affecting the quality of town when you've got Brookdale with what, thousands of elderly people living there. There's plenty of traffic going in and out of there, too. But, you know, Mr. Toback suggested that the, his expert opinion was that these special uses should not be granted because of cumulative impact. But he was unable to describe the signage proposed and admitted he had never read the signage plan. That undermines his credibility, because he was testifying to all of the different special uses that have been requested. And he was unable to answer the question of whether signage that was requested would have a negative impact on the surrounding area. So, I'm on the fence on this one. Next one. The proposed special uses will not create a nuisance in the area nor hinder or endanger vehicular or pedestrian movement. As far as what I said before about-
These overlap, these overlap, but you can elaborate more if you want to, but these are overlapping criteria, so it's up to you, how you want to handle it.
I think I wanted to put on the record that Tiverton recently passed an ordinance on the queuing.
Yeah.
And-
For drive-throughs, yes.
For a drive-through. And I think it's 10 cars or nine cars?
I think it's based for three or four, I think.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't- I think it's accommodate nine, to accommodate nine cars.
That may be informative, but I wouldn't rely upon that ordinance that was passed after the fact.
And I believe that the Colbea's expert testified they could fit more than enough, but Mr., I think it's Mr. Meth that said cars don't line up bumper to bumper, and it's more like five or six cars that can fit in there. You know, in terms of my observations, I'm surprised that nobody went and checked out competing drive-throughs in town to find out how, how much coffee did Tivertonians drink so they could make some kind of a prediction on this. But I've seen-
They have a different, what kind of coffees they serve.
Well, yeah, but they're serving, you know, they're not serving Dunkin' Donuts, and they're not serving Starbucks. But, I mean, to me, it just, you know, I go buy Dunkin' Donuts, I live on Lake Road, I go buy Sip 'n Dip, you know, they're down the street from me, and very rarely do I see more than four or five cars there. I don't know, Dunkin' Donuts on Main Road might be completely different, but-
Facts on the record, please. Facts on the record, please.
Yeah, no, I mean, you know, it's pretty much that I go by these places, and I don't see, I don't see any cars backed out on the road. Okay, I'm done with that one. I think we're up to the signage.
Five, four and five.
Oh.
So, again, four overlapped with two and, one and two. I know the board had testimony about the traffic, and so it's up to you if you wanted to add to that, but as long as it's on the record, if you feel comfortable, that's fine.
I think the next one is, is-
Adequate water and sewer chair.
I mean, I think we're all in agreement that they have-
That doesn't apply.
Well, it applies, but it's satisfied by the fact that it has town water and sewer.
Well, the pumps don't need water and sewage anyway.
No, but the business does.
Yeah, but that's-
And the restaurant.
And the restaurant, which is permitted.
We're only talking about technically the pumps right now, but-
Okay, all right.
But I think the, based upon, again, let me suggest that based upon the record and the submission, that there is evidence in the record that this site is being serviced by public water and public sewer.
Well, it's 10 o'clock. I don't know how the board feels about continuing going. We have to be unanimous on that, or we can come back another day. What are your thoughts on that?
Want to finish the, it's number six.
Okay. We think we, okay, we'll go to number six. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Everybody says yes? Okay. The requirements for the special use permit for signage.
No, 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 no. We're still, we're still on the gas pumps. It will be incompatible with the comprehensive community plan of the town of Tiverton. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'll start. You know, the town comprehensive, comprehensive town plan says a lot of different things, and it certainly discusses the issue of tax base and wanting to encourage commercial growth here. And it also says, and I'm quoting Mrs. Jones', focus was that this is a small coastal town, and we want to stay that way. And those are both, they're both in the comprehensive plan. So, how we dice that or slice that, I don't know.
I have to agree on the fact that, but that is a commercial piece of property.
That's it, yeah.
You know, and it does start, as has been pointed out, does start the corridor of all the way up to the Far River Line.
All right.
And we only have just a very small few sections of general commercial in Tiverton?
Yeah.
And this is one of those parcels?
And, you know, quite frankly, I, as much as I want it, I'm an 18th century kind of person. Times change, and, you know, I think that Colbea has made a big effort to try to satisfy the aesthetics, to try to make it look more colonial, but, you know, it is more, it's a commercial designated space, so that's what I'm struggling with.
So, who will protect Tiverton from turning into a city?
Wow, that's a little too metaphysical for me, and not exactly part of the criteria that we need to look at.
Well, you just said, we, you're 19th century.
I looked at this a little differently. I, the, the gas station is not a prohibited use. I've said that before. So, because of that, it has, there are a lot of things in the comprehensive community plan that I don't think we have any expertise on, that don't apply to us, and I, I believe that all we really need to be looking at is the zoning issues that are within the comprehensive, this section, because the, well, I, I'm losing, and it's getting late, but I, I think that we, as long as you meet all of the zoning requirements, you effectively meet the comprehensive community plan, because the community, comprehensive community plan was first, and then defining how the town wants to grow, and then the zoning ordinance was written telling you how it's supposed to grow. So, that's why I think we need to be looking primarily at the zoning issues, not all the others. There are so many there that, you know, costs, jobs, and, you know, all those things that are just not something we should be addressing. I don't know if you agree with that, Mike, but I think we need to limit that, focus in on something a little smaller than everything in the comprehensive community plan.
There was testimony in the record from both experts about whether it met or met the plan. Do you have to consider it? You can rely on zoning, I think. Jay indicated his belief on that, whether that carries the board, that's, you know, that is the beginning of a commercial district, that's certainly something that is in the record and could be relied upon in making a decision, but that's up to you to decide. But you do have to make a findings regarding-
How diplomatic.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I don't make, I don't get to make the votes. So, that's, unless there's other comments, that's for the, for the gas station and-
The signage, I think we should call it a night.
Yeah, but do you want to, want to vote on this, or you just want to?
No, I don't think we should vote on anything on that.
Okay, so if you're not voting on this tonight, my instructions to you is that you are not to talk to one another while this case is pending. You are certainly not to talk to any member of the public while this case is pending, and you are to limit your review, and you are to limit your review on the record as to where we are on this. But, kind of like a juror now, so you've got to be-
Would I be proper in asking whether you think we have enough?
That would not be proper for me to. I will say that, I will say this, in general, I believe that you have successfully articulated on the record facts that would support any finding that you would need to make. So, I will say that.
When we do vote-
Yep.
At the next meeting, will we need to specify more facts, just at least for this one?
If you have additional, because we're not closing the record yet, I don't think council would have a, council haven't objected to that. We're not officially voting yet. We're going to continue this hearing until the next date in May, I believe, so.
I think our opinion, the board has the right to deliberate fully-
Correct. Correct, and that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Chris, do you have any problem with that? No, thank you. Just for the record, that was no for all parties on the record. So, again, my instructions to you are very clear, like, I feel like I'm a judge, even though I'm not a judge. You can only, you can only talk to, do not talk to one another, keep your comments to yourself, do not talk to members of the public, and if someone does try to call you, say, I cannot talk about this matter, and it's being deliberated. And there will be no other additional records that be submitted.
Okay, I think we need, is it, we going to schedule this for a regular date?
Yeah, I don't know when our next date may is.
The first Wednesday in May.
It's May, is it May 3rd? It's May 7th.
Six, seven o'clock, May 7th, seven o'clock, pending, pending-
Do you want to do it at 6:00?
Six, whatever. I don't know, we, I don't know what's on the agenda for May 7th, so tend to be May 7th.
And that's an official date.
Official date.
We need to make a motion to adjourn. So, make a motion to continue this hearing till May-
I'd make a motion to continue this hearing. Excuse me, we're still in session. We're still in session. I would move that we continue this matter to May 7th for purposes of continued deliberation on this matter.
I make a second to the motion.
All those in favor? Okay, and I make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
There's two here.
Unanimous.